Good morning. I'm going to call this meeting to order. San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors on this day, October 21st. The time is 9:04. We'll have a moment of silence, silent reflection, or silent prayer. At this time, Supervisor Rickman, would you have some help in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to have, I'm going to ask Abigail, where is she, Abigail? FFA, why don't you come up to the podium up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Abigail. She didn't even know, put you right on the spot. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Gordilla.
Present.
Supervisor Dolewol.
Present.
Supervisor Ding.
Here.
Supervisor Rickman.
Here.
Chair Canepa.
Here. At this time, I would like to have our new ISD Director come to the podium, Tristan Cormier.
So, what do I do, turn this way? Or turn this way?
No, we can find you.
Okay, you can see me? All right. So, my name is Tristan Cormier, the new CIO here at San Joaquin County. I come from the Secretary of State where I was the lead CIO for Dr. Shoney Weber, who's another elected official. Happy to be here. We have a great group of people here. I know I've got to keep my time short, but you probably don't know what a CIO is, and if you want to know what that is, come talk to me after. I will tell you what it is. It's a really cool job, and I'm just happy to be here, looking forward to supporting the county, because we have a great number of people and resources here, and I want you guys to fill our present. Chief Information Officer. So, oversee all the technology, cybersecurity, you know, network engineering, things like that.
Keep trying.
Okay, we can do that. All right? So, if there's any other questions for me, I'll be happy to talk to anybody about technology and things like that. I'm just happy to be here and look forward to serving the county, okay? All right. Anything else?
Perfect. Supervisor Rickman.
Oh, welcome. It was, you know, nice meeting you in the elevator this morning. So, you know, hey, let us know, you know, whatever you need, and welcome to San Joaquin County.
Supervisor Ding.
Yes, welcome. We're still not sure if you're AI or not, and whether you actually exist, so.
You can hitch me.
There you go.
Supervisor Gordilla.
Welcome to the team. I'm glad we have a new addition.
Vice Chair Dolewol.
Welcome, sir.
And yeah, we won't be offended that you didn't address us directly, but it's fine that you're a community, the community-involved person, so welcome aboard and welcome to the team of 8,000 employees we call San Joaquin County, so welcome. Thank you very much. All righty. At this time, Madam Clerk, I guess we're going on to recognitions and presentations, please.
Thank you, Chair. Our first recognition is the Proclamation of October 2025 as Bi-National Health Month in San Joaquin County, and I would like to invite Joan Singson with the Healthcare Centers, the San Joaquin Health Centers, to the podium as we read this proclamation, which states, whereas in 2001, Bi-National Health Week was created with the goal of raising awareness and responding to the needs of potentially underserved populations in California and Mexico. And whereas in 2016, San Joaquin County expanded this outreach, dedicating the entire month of October, thus creating Bi-National Health Month, further fostering solidarity by bringing together existing organizations, individual stakeholders, and volunteers in the hopes of reaching more people. And whereas for the last 23 years, this event has become one of the largest mobilization efforts in the North American region to promote the health and well-being of immigrant and migrant people from any county who live in the United States, Canada, and Mexico. And whereas the 2025 San Joaquin County Bi-National Health Coalition theme is diversity, equity, and inclusion in healthcare, believing that access to care is one of the most crucial issues that directly affect health and well-being, highlighting the need to continue to share resources and work in partnership to help the community. And whereas three major events will be held in San Joaquin County, hosted by the San Joaquin County Health Centers, Community Partnership for Families, and California Human Development, offering preventative healthcare, vaccinations, social services, and other resources. Now therefore, be it resolved that the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim October 2025 as Bi-National Health Month in San Joaquin County to support and encourages efforts that improve the health and well-being of our community members. Presented this 21st day of October 2025. Chair Canepa.
Thank you. Health outcomes is one of our goals that we put on the board, and it's important because sometimes our health outcomes in San Joaquin County aren't all that great. So, the outreach that you guys do is so important in getting those to be better for us, and we've all been doing it, and all try to, try to make it better, but it's the meeting people where they're at is, I think, the most important part, and I appreciate you guys for the mobile clinics and all the outreach that you do. So, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chairman Canepa. And on behalf of the Bi-National Health Coalition, I wish to thank the Board of Supervisors, and thank you for that, for the proclamation. It really is something that is important to us. And I remember in August, I was here to, to speak about the collaboration that's needed among the community health centers. Today, I bring to you the partnership in the whole community, community organizations, faith organizations, to support what we do in the community health centers. This is of utmost importance to us, and they are all represented here. And we have had three opportunities to celebrate this, and the last one will be this Saturday at the Hospital Grounds, 500 West Hospital Road. And we're doing this one in collaboration with San Joaquin General Hospital as well. Again, it's all about partnerships, and we are moving forward in 2026 to an even broader coalition to serve an even broader, you know, community in, in San Joaquin County. So, we really thank the Board of Supervisors for all your support and for acknowledging the importance of, of community and, and health outcome improvement. I'll let my partners say something. Dr. Ding.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name's Eliana, and it is an honor for Healthnet to continue to be a partner, not only to the community with SJ Health and a lot of the people that are actually here in this room. We continue to look for those healthcare outcomes and those improvements in our members' lives. So again, it is an honor to continue to support and be here, and thank you all for having us.
Good morning. Jonathan Deleao, Chief Medical Officer, San Joaquin Health Centers. Just to echo what's already been said, it's a great event. Anyone can, is free and can attend. We have the parking lot full of vendors, our managed care plans. We also have the clinics open where we're doing Care Gap Clinics, you know, depression, or depression screening, diabetes screening, hypertension screening, cervical cancer screenings. And it's really a good event to, for, for the community to see what we do and to break that barrier as far as coming in for care.
Good morning, members of, members of the board. My name is John Solis, and I'm a retired dedicated county employee, so it's good to be here. You know, for 25 years, this San Joaquin County Bi-National Collaborative has come together to leverage their resources and work and serve the community and support each other. And, you know, relationships were built, you know, and these organizations continue throughout the year to work together. And I think it's symbolic to come together in, in October and celebrate this diverse organization. It's not just the healthcare services, but a lot of the community service organizations, and the one leading the pack is San Joaquin County and all its service providers. And for the past 25 years, San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors have been there supporting this effort, so thank you very much for your support.
Good morning, members of the board. Daniel Kim with Public Health. We're proud to be a part of this collaboration and working together with our other healthcare partners. Public Health will be out there providing our services, including car seat check as well as drug takeback, so we hope to see you all out there. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jess Moreno. I'm, I'm with Community Partnership for Families. I'm the Site Manager at the Dorothy L. Jones Family Resource Center in South Stockton, and we have been part of the coalition in the past years, and we were proud to host the first event in our county on October 4th, providing services to the community in South Stockton with the support of the rest of the coalition, also HealthPenta San Joaquin and Dignity Health, who sponsored our event. We were able to provide services to over 100 people, including flu vaccinations, including health screenings with community medical centers, and we had 35 different service, social service agencies in our, on our premises that were providing resources to the community as they came by. So, we look forward to supporting the rest of the coalition this Saturday at the event. We also participated in the event on this past Sunday, the second event, as part of Bi-National, and we look forward to continuing to watch this coalition grow in the years to come and through all the continued partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Next we have, and I do need to note a correction, the Proclamation of November 2025 as Caregiver Appreciation Month in San Joaquin County. It was agendized as proclaiming October 2025, but it is November 2025. I would like to invite Mary Nicholson with Healings in Motion to the podium as we read this proclamation, which states, whereas more than 11,400 baby boomers are turning 65 daily, and many may need caregiving as they grow older and live longer, yet there is a looming shortage of caregivers throughout California. And whereas caregivers manage multiple responsibilities, including managing medical communications, finances, medications, and social connections for care recipients, while also balancing their work and caring for their immediate family. And whereas, as a result, caregiver burnout has become a significant health concern requiring medical, psychological, and economic support that comes from a state of physical, emotional, and mental exhaustion. And whereas 89% of caregivers are related to their care recipient, with 50% being their parents or parents-in-law, 12% spouses, 8% grandparents, and 7% siblings. And whereas in 2021, the unpaid care provided by California's family caregivers was valued at approximately $81 billion, which is equivalent to 4.1 billion hours of care. And whereas caregivers deserve a dedicated period for self-care, recognition, respite, training, and support to sustain their vital role within our communities, especially as demand grows, as care grows. And now therefore, be it resolved that this San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim November 2025 as Caregiver Appreciation Month in San Joaquin County, and encourages all citizens to honor the selfless service and importance of caregivers throughout our county. Presented this 21st day of October 2025. Chair Canepa.
Thank you. This is really important. I was at the Alzheimer's Walk the other day, and those folks, you could see the caregivers, you could see the people that were suffering currently with Alzheimer's, and just the hardship that it puts on the families and the caregivers that, that do it. So, I always appreciate folks that stand up and can do this work, because it's not for the faint of heart, and a lot of people do it for free. So, thank you for coming today, and you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Yes, caregiving is so important, and we've been recognizing those who have served as family caregivers or unpaid caregivers. We're starting the Caring for the Caregiver Initiative, because seldom do we recognize caregiving from the top down. You are caregivers. You, yourself, are caregivers. You're taking in account the fact that people who are working at the hospitals, who are healthcare leaders, are all caregivers, and oftentimes carry a lot of weight, because you are juggling a lot, and you're setting up policies that affect the caregivers. Now, I don't know if you know, know this, but the third leading cause of death nationally happens to be medical errors. And when you look at the fact that we have people who are dealing with so many things, whether it is juggling their own caregiver's duties for their own personal selves, or taking care of patients, how can you expect someone who is working in a medical facility caring for somebody else and also weighing the burden of caring for a family member? As we are getting older, at least I am, you guys don't look like you're changing at all, but the thing is, these are people. And this year, Healings in Motion is going to spotlight the caregivers from the top to those who are family members, because we don't stop and recognize the weight that you carry. The CEOs at the hospitals, yes, they have tools that measure their success, you know, whether it's safety. Right now, a couple of the hospitals have actually gotten As in safety. There, you know, when I talk about data and things like that, we all should be celebrating when, when our hospitals are doing great, and also championing those who are not, because we are, as a community, involved in all of this. It's not a whisper, we want to bring talent here, we want to sustain talent here. And so, we got to be in the people business, show empathy, and understand that these are people, whether it's doctors, residents, it's nurses, and I'm going to tell you, everybody that I have talked to about the caregiving, caring for the caregiver initiative says, I want to be a part of that. I say, wait a minute. We got to start right now recognizing those people at the top who are making decisions, who are recognizing that caregivers, whether they're family caregivers, are those who are dealing with burnout from both ends. So, I really accept this on behalf of all caregivers in our community, whether it is on your behalf as caregivers or the unpaid caregivers. We're all in this to win, and so today, I accept November being proclaimed as Caregiver Appreciation Month, but we're going to take it even, even further than that. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I got to do those things. I get the proclamation.
Next, we have the recognition of Abigail Avila by Supervisor Rickman of the 5th Supervisory District in support of Chair Canepa's initiative to recognize our future leaders of San Joaquin County. And I invite Ms. Avila to the podium as I read this recognition, which states, the certificate of recognition is presented to Abigail Avila in recognition of your exceptional leadership, vision, and dedication as Delta Vice President and Delta Valley Sectional Vice President, has created a meaningful change in your school and community. As a senior in the Ag Science Academy at Tracy High School, your initiative to design and build a newly refurbished Tracy High School barn stands as a testament to your commitment to agricultural education, youth development, and the future of FFA. Your project reflects not only a deep understanding of responsibility, time, financial management, and leadership, but also a compassionate desire to open doors for others. By creating a safe and accessible space for students to raise livestock, you are empowering future generations with opportunities they might, they might not otherwise have had. Your work embodies the true spirit of a young leader who is not only prepared for the future, but is actively shaping it. Congratulations and best wishes. Presented this 21st day of October 2025. Chair Canepa and Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you.
First of all, great to see you again. Before, you know, I talk, I want to turn it over to you, so you can say a few words.
Okay. Good morning, Board members. My name is Abigail Avila, and I am currently a senior at Tracy High School. Many on campus know me as someone who is constantly involved and passionate about contributing to our school community. Outside of school, my family would describe me as funny, energetic, and caring. At Tracy High, I am an active member of our student government program, where I focus on promoting school spirit and engagement through media. I manage our school's Instagram and TikTok account, sharing updates about events, activities, and opportunities for students to get involved. In addition, I proudly serve as Vice President for both the Tracy FFA chapter and the Delta Valley section. I am also part of the Agriculture Science Academy, which is a program on campus that challenges students academically and encourages community involvement through our senior projects. My senior project was inspired by my lifelong passion for showing livestock and my dedication to the FFA organization. After speaking with many chapter members, I noticed that a major reason some students don't participate in showing livestock is the lack of space or proper facilities to house animals before fair, especially for those who live within city limits. To address this, I decided my project was going to be refurbishing an existing structure on our school campus and transform it into a fully functional animal barn. The facility will include access to water, storage, and waste management areas, allowing students to properly care for their animals. My hope is that this barn will accommodate species such as lambs, goats, and pigs, and ultimately give students the opportunity to experience livestock projects firsthand. FFA has truly shaped who I am today. When I started high school, I was shy, reserved, and hesitant to get involved. That changed after my very first FFA event, the Opening and Closing Ceremonies Contest, where I competed as a green hand and placed third high overall as president. From that moment forward, FFA became a transformative part of my life. It has given me countless opportunities to grow in public speaking, leadership, and confidence. Through experiences like attending the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis and competing at Cal Poly State Finals, I have met incredible people and developed a deep passion for agriculture. I would deeply encourage students to join FFA, because there is truly something for everyone. While many associate FFA with showing livestock, the organization offers so much more, such as judging teams in citrus, horse evaluation, milk quality, and dairy cattle. Now, these are just some of the many teams that students can get involved in. These experiences build skills and memories unlike anything else in high school. My advice to all students is simple: get involved, take chances, and make the most of your time in high school. Looking ahead, I plan to continue my journey in agriculture by attending Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, majoring in either Agriculture Communications or Animal Science. Agriculture has had a profound impact on my life, and I hope to one day share my knowledge and passion with future generations. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who has supported me throughout my journey. To my parents and family, thank you for your endless encouragement, your patience during early mornings and late nights, and for always believing in me. To my teachers, advisors, and counselors, thank you for your guidance, support, and mentorship, both academically and personally. And finally, a very special thank you to Mr. Robert Rickman and Mr. Tyrell for your tremendous support in making my senior project a reality. What once felt like an impossible dream is now becoming a tangible opportunity for countless Tracy FFA members. Your belief in this vision will impact not only me, but generations of students to come. Thank you, Mr. Rickman, and members of the board, for allowing me to share my story and experiences today. It is my hope that the work I have done and the lessons I've learned through FFA will continue to inspire and empower the next generation of agriculture leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Abigail. I mean, bringing you here today, you know, to show, you know, folks here in San Joaquin County who our future leaders are, and you're, you're a prime example of that. Only thing I would say, anytime you mention Tracy High School, you have to say, "Go Bulldogs." Mostly when you have folks like Franklin, you know, like Mario, we won't, we won't get there. You know, I had the honor and to join my Chief of Staff, Scott, to go to Tracy High, the FFA, and see exactly, you know, what you're planning, and, you know, what you mentioned, and, you know, Ag Fest every year, and getting more students involved in FFA and raising animals, and seeing what you're doing, and see, you know, if you look at, for example, the city of Tracy, it's almost 100,000 people, so you have a lot of folk, so a lot of kids that live in city limits that don't have the place to raise an animal. Can't have a cow or sheep in your backyard, right? So, it's, it's a place for them to go raise their animals and experience what, you know, what, 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 what you mentioned. You know, FFA, I'm a huge fan. Our agriculture, and this whole board stands behind our agriculture community. Our number one economy in this county is agriculture, it's a $3.2 billion industry. So, again, thank you for being here today. Thank you for being a leader. Thank you for being a mentor to your younger classmen and your other FFA students. Again, God bless you and your family.
Thank you.
Chair, next we have the presentation of the San Joaquin County Healthcare Services and the San Joaquin County Healthcare Clinics, Functions, Programs, and Highlights. And our Director of Healthcare Services, Genevieve, will open us up.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, County Council, Madam CIO. I'm Genevieve Valentine, your Healthcare Services Director. Before we get started, I want to thank the board for stacking the agenda high with health and leadership this morning, because right behind me in the first two rows is the dedicated leaders of your healthcare service agency. Today, we will actually be agendized Item 4 and 5. We are not yielding any of our time, because we need both 4 and 5's time in order to highlight the history, the accomplishments, the purpose, and our future goals of the Healthcare Service Agency. Instead of starting with a PowerPoint and us going through pictures for Healthcare Services Agency works every day to protect, heal, and uplift the people of San Joaquin County. We deliver high-quality, accessible, and integrated healthcare. We advocate for the physical and behavioral health needs of underserved communities, promote health and well-being, and educate the health professionals of tomorrow, building a healthier region for generations to come. Just one year after joining the union, in 1851, California's leaders recognized the critical need for mental health care. San Joaquin County Behavioral Health Services has a legacy that dates back over 170 years. In 1853, California's first public mental health hospital was established in Stockton, dedicated to housing and treating those with mental health conditions. From those humble and challenging beginnings, San Joaquin County's Behavioral Health Services has grown into a nationally respected system. Today, BHS offers inpatient and outpatient programs, substance use recovery, and peer support services that focus on recovery, dignity, and hope. The original hospital closed in 1995, and in its place, San Joaquin County's modern Behavioral Health Services system was born. 1982 marked the opening of the psychiatric health facility, where intensive inpatient psychiatric care has continually expanded to meet the evolving needs of our community. Fueled by the passage of the Mental Health Services Act in 2004 and guided by a commitment to community-centered care, BHS now offers a broad range of services to support individuals living with behavioral health conditions and helping residents navigate life's most challenging moments and emerge stronger. With a mission to partner with the community, Behavioral Health Services provides integrated, culturally competent care that spans prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery. BHS empowers individuals, families, and care teams, fostering hope and resilience throughout San Joaquin County. Guided by four core values: Respect, Service, Integrity, and Recovery, BHS provides critical care to the most vulnerable in our community. When emergencies happen, they respond. But Emergency Medical Services, or EMS, is far more than flashing lights and sirens. It's a system built on coordination, skill, and readiness. EMS delivers advanced, pre-hospital care when seconds matter most. But EMS responders aren't just first on the scene. They're often the first to recognize a broader health crisis in our community. They are vital partners in public health, emergency management, and increasingly, community care. And what you see, the vehicles, the uniforms, the helicopters, is just the surface. Behind every emergency call is a system of agencies, providers, hospitals, and partners, all working together to ensure that lifesaving care is delivered quickly, effectively, and with compassion. Established in 1982 by the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors, the San Joaquin County EMS Agency was created to oversee and manage this critical system in accordance with California law. Its mission is to ensure the efficient and effective delivery of emergency medical services and mutual aid for the citizens and visitors of San Joaquin County. Today, EMS providers are highly trained, highly skilled, and prepared for anything, from traffic collisions to mass casualty events. Behind every siren is a system of care, built on tradition, driven by technology, and resolute in a commitment to saving lives. Ready every day, for every kind of emergency. Whether or not it ends at the hospital, EMS is there. Over the past 150 years, two powerful forces have shaped public health as we know it: the increase in scientific understanding of disease and the growing belief that disease prevention is not just possible, it's a public responsibility. From Roosevelt's New Deal in the 1930s to Johnson's Great Society in the 1960s, our nation has embraced the idea that health and social welfare are not just luxuries, they are rights. During these decades, the role of government in healthcare grew federally, statewide, and locally, bringing health services, education, and prevention efforts directly into our communities. Founded in 1952, San Joaquin County Public Health Services uses innovative, evidence-based approaches to create equitable health conditions for our communities. Our mission is to protect, promote, educate, and improve health, and the factors that influence well-being, for everyone in San Joaquin County. The SJC Public Health Lab stands as one of only 14 remaining public health labs in the state, and serves as a regional lab for partnering counties. Designed to respond to chemical and biological threats, including bioterrorism and emerging infectious diseases, our county microbiologists and epidemiologists are working to detect, survey, test, and research ways to advance public health knowledge and develop new interventions. With programs that support our most vulnerable: infants, children, teens, pregnant women, and mothers, Public Health Services is more than a department. It is a promise to protect, promote, and improve health for all who call San Joaquin County home. When no one else can, they step in. When vulnerable individuals can no longer make decisions for themselves, San Joaquin County's Office of the Public Guardian and Conservator becomes their voice and their protector. The concept of conservatorship dates back centuries, but in California, it was modernized with the Lanterman-Petrus Short Act of 1967, which created protections for those deemed gravely disabled due to mental illness. Today, with a team of approximately 32 staff, the office provides three core programs: LPS and probate conservatorships, and representative payee services for mental health and cognitively disabled clients who are unable to independently manage their finances. Whether the need is legal, medical, or financial, and whether the client is a senior, an adult with mental illness, or someone with no family help, the Public Guardian Office steps in with compassion, accountability, and integrity. It's not just a legal service, it's a lifeline, helping individuals live with dignity even when they can't advocate for themselves. Inside San Joaquin County's justice system, there's a second system, one that promotes healing and recovery in a challenging environment. Correctional Health Services, or CHS, provides medical, dental, and preventative healthcare for incarcerated adults and juveniles. From chronic illness and dental care to enhanced care management and discharge planning, CHS brings community-standard healthcare to the county jail, the Honor Farm, and the Juvenile Justice Center. Established practices follow Title 15 of California's legal standards, with licensed physicians, nurses, mental health clinicians, and specialists, working in tandem with San Joaquin General Hospital, Behavioral Health, and the SJ Health Clinics. Correctional Health doesn't just treat individuals, it prepares them for the future. Through programs like CalAim, CHS connects individuals to healthcare and services before they return to the community, helping to reduce recidivism and restore lives. Constitutional care, community impact. Correctional Health Services is a critical link between incarceration and the potential for long-term health and recovery. Supporting and honoring veterans are values woven into the fabric of our nation, as well as here in San Joaquin County. In 1944, as World War II came to a close, the San Joaquin County Veteran Service Office, or VSO, was established by the Board of Supervisors to ensure that local veterans received the benefits they had so proudly earned and deserved. For more than 80 years, the VSO has served as an unwavering advocate, helping veterans and their families to access a wide range of life-changing resources, from disability and pensions claims to education, housing, healthcare, and burial benefits. Today, the office provides expert benefits counseling, claim support, and referral services, standing beside veterans and their families at every step of the process. That includes assistance with discharge upgrades, employment resources, VA home loan resource information, military record requests, and more. Whether a veteran has served in peacetime or in war, every claim is met with courtesy, respect, and a deep commitment to service. With every file, every form, and every contact, they honor service with service. Every year, thousands of people pass away in San Joaquin County. When a death is unexpected, unexplained, or unnatural, the Office of the Medical Examiner steps in to provide answers to family and law enforcement. The San Joaquin County Office of the Medical Examiner performs scientific investigations to provide insight as to the cause and manner of death, furthering understanding and promoting closure. The office is responsible for investigating nearly one-half of all the deaths in the county, and their work directly supports families, law enforcement, and public health. Built in the 1930s, the county's original morgue served the community for more than 85 years. In 2023, construction began on a modern, state-of-the-art facility to meet the growing demands with greater capacity and efficiency. Now, with the new morgue's construction nearly complete, the Medical Examiner's office is ready to meet the future, honoring every life through clarity, care, and truth. The responsibilities of the Office of the Medical Examiner include identifying the deceased, notifying families, and protecting the deceased's estate until it is legally transferred. Though their work happens quietly and behind the scenes, the impact is lasting. The Medical Examiner speaks for those who can no longer speak for themselves. San Joaquin County has provided primary healthcare services to low-income residents through San Joaquin General Hospital since 1857. In 2010, by direction of the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors, the San Joaquin County Clinics were established and assumed responsibility for providing primary care services as a department of the county hospital. San Joaquin County Health Clinics received formal designation as a federally qualified health center look-alike by the U.S. Health Resources and Service Administration in July of 2014. Today, San Joaquin Health Centers, also known as SJ Health, serve more than 30,000 patients annually through 130,000 individual visits. These are federally qualified health center look-alike clinics committed to equity, access, and innovation. SJ Health brings primary care, dental, street medicine, enhanced case management, and behavioral health services directly to those who need them most. Whether it's managing chronic illness, supporting maternal health, or providing pediatric care, SJ Health Centers are a trusted resource in one of California's most diverse and underserved regions. From clinics to mobile units, SJ Health is expanding its reach, deepening partnerships, and removing barriers to care, ensuring that every patient receives high-quality, culturally-appropriate services. Rooted in tradition, driven by innovation, SJ Health is the future of integrated care right here in San Joaquin County. The Healthcare Services Administration Division is where the behind-the-scenes action takes place. HCS administration consists of contracts and grant management, fiscal and billing operations, information security, employment and training support, facility maintenance, and fraud, waste, and abuse oversight through regulatory compliance. These teams ensure that the day-to-day functions of all of Healthcare Services Agency departments are carried out with the highest level of integrity. It takes a village to deliver state-of-the-art, integrated healthcare. Since 1857, our county has made health a priority, providing compassionate, culturally-respectful, and forward-thinking care to those who need it most. Today, that legacy lives on through the San Joaquin County Healthcare Services Agency. Our dedicated professionals across eight divisions serve over 800,000 residents, delivering vital services that support the health and well-being of every community that we touch. Through every challenge, we've shown what it means to serve with heart, with vision, and with purpose. As we celebrate this historic milestone, we don't just honor where we've been, we look ahead to where we're going. Together, we will continue to build a healthier, stronger, and more compassionate San Joaquin County for this generation and for the many more still to come.
At this time, we're actually going to move into our PowerPoint presentation and allow each of the department heads of Healthcare Services share a little bit about their purpose, highlights, and milestones. As our video said, in 1857, healthcare became a priority in this county by the opening of San Joaquin General Hospital. From these humble beginnings, we have grown and have highlighted various things. However, in 2010, a Board of Supervisors, none of you, but a Board of Supervisors had the vision to create the Healthcare Service Agency as a standalone department separating from the general hospital with one sole purpose: to establish a solid foundation of public health and wellness through a health system designed for prevention, education, and treatment for the most vulnerable across our county. We have eight essential clinical divisions and one administrative department: Behavioral Health, Office of the Public Guardian and Conservator, Office of the Medical Examiner, Public Health, EMS, Correctional Health, Veteran Services, SJ Health Clinics, which is our newest addition to the family, and the Healthcare Service Administration Agency. We have over 1,800 dedicated professionals and an annual budget nearing $575 million, making us the largest budget in the county. Currently, our present and current successes will not be stopped, and we must first acknowledge the individual stories of each department.
Thank you, Genevieve. My name is Fay Viera, and I'm the Interim Director for Behavioral Health Services. I'm excited to be here today to share about a wonderful department that I have called home for the past 13 years. Behavioral Health has an integrated contract with the Department of Healthcare Services to fulfill our mission to provide mental health and substance use services. We have a wide variety of funding sources, including state, federal, and grants, and we are working diligently to maintain our funding streams. Our purpose is to serve those with San Joaquin County Medi-Cal and the uninsured who have moderate to severe needs. Those with mild to moderate needs are served by our managed care plans, and we work closely with them to make sure the needs of the entire community are met. BHS is a large department with programs ranging from outpatient services to inpatient psychiatric services. Even though we have over 720 dedicated staff, we cannot fulfill our mission alone. Therefore, we partner with community-based organizations to meet the needs of San Joaquin County. About 51% of the services we provide are provided through the CBOs. These services include therapy, medication- We have over one thousand eight hundred dedicated professionals and an annual budget nearing five hundred and seventy-five million dollars, making us the largest budget in the county. Currently, our present and current successes will not be stopped, and we must first acknowledge the individual stories of each department.
Thank you, Genevieve. My name is Faye Viera, and I'm the interim director for Behavioral Health Services. I'm excited to be here today to share about a wonderful department that I have called home for the past thirteen years. Behavioral Health has an integrated contract with the Department of Healthcare Services to fulfill our mission to provide mental health and substance use services. We have a wide variety of funding sources, including state, federal, and grants, and we are working diligently to maintain our funding streams. Our purpose is to serve those with San Joaquin County Medi-Cal and the uninsured who have moderate to severe needs. Those with mild to moderate needs are served by our managed care plans, and we work closely with them to make sure the needs of the entire community are met. BHS is a large department with programs ranging from outpatient services to inpatient psychiatric services. Even though we have over seven hundred and twenty dedicated staff, we cannot fulfill our mission alone. Therefore, we partner with community-based organizations to meet the needs of San Joaquin County. About fifty-one percent of the services we provide are provided through these CBOs. These services include therapy, medication management, case management, housing supports, just to name a few. The work my team does is not easy. We are heavily regulated. Not a day goes by without a new mandate, information notice, or a deadline. But we are a resilient team, ready for all challenges. We know our success means the community receives better care. As you can see from this slide, BHS has had a busy year full of milestones and accomplishments. We launched Care Court, expanded 24/7 Mobile Crisis, uplifted a diversion program with the Public Defender, started our Be Well Campus, took on the responsibility of jail behavioral health services, and hosted BHSA planning sessions with the cities. The last two highlights on this slide took place just this month. The DHCS reviewed and approved the San Joaquin Submission One for BH Connect Access Reform Outcomes Incentive Programs, resulting in an incentive payment of one point four million dollars. Additionally, in partnership with local CBOs, BHS was awarded fifteen point nine million in Home Key Plus funding for the Bridge to Home Project. These accomplishments help support the Board of Supervisors' strategic priorities of maintaining fiscal responsibility, supporting a healthy community, and reducing unsheltered homelessness. It is important to note that many of these accomplishments were made possible by the support of our Board of Supervisors and our County Administrator's Office. We can and will continue to grow to better meet the needs of our community. With Genevieve Valentine and the supportive Board of Supervisors, there's nothing we can't do. In September of 2025, we broke ground on the Be Well Campus, a new behavioral healthcare facility that will expand access to care and strengthen the commitment to building a healthy future. We are currently drafting our first BHSA plan. BHSA will expand substance use treatment while redirecting our prevention dollars to public health, allowing us to focus on housing the most vulnerable. Over the next three years, Behavioral Health will be uplifting seven new mandated evidence-based practices, and the Lodi Access Center will expand beds for BHS members in Lodi by sixteen. We are working with the Sheriff's Office to open a therapeutic housing unit in the jail for inmates with severe mental health needs. Our hope is that they will have a good experience with behavioral health while in custody, so they're more likely to follow up with services when they discharge. The great work we do would not be possible without support from Chair Canepa and the Board. Thank you for being a champion for behavioral health.
Hello, I'm Ian Barkley. I'm the Public Guardian Conservator. Our office is responsible for care supervision and financial management of residents who are severely disabled and unable to manage their affairs or make appropriate decisions for themselves. These individuals are usually are either mentally ill or have cognitive impairments. They typically don't have a family member that can assist with them, and so we are the conservator of last resort. We also conduct official county investigations for conservatorship matters, and we are the legally-appointed guardian or conservator for the person. A little bit of history about our office. So the LPS Act established the involuntary civil commitment process, which we follow for LPS conservatorships. Our office was originally a part of Mental Health Department. We became our own separate department in 2003, and we continue to work closely with BHS. Joanne Ringstrom, I'm sorry, but Joanne Ringstrom had the original role as interim public guardian conservator while we were transitioning into our independent department, and then Scarlett Hughes was, in 2004, was the first standalone public guardian conservator. So recently, we've been reorganized under BHS. We've also added alternative placement team to our program, and some of the recent legislation that might impact our department is the SB 27, which expands Care Court, and SB 43, which is the expansion of grade disability. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Canepa and distinguished board members, and County Administrator Rogalo. My name is Paul Graves. I am the Operations Administrator for the Office of the Medical Examiner. I'll start out with the purpose of our department. The Office of the Medical Examiner is responsible for determining the circumstances, cause, manner, of all deaths falling under our jurisdiction, including unattended, unusual, criminal, violent, deaths related to contagious disease, suicide, and accidental deaths. Field death investigators, postmortem examinations, toxicology, and other related forensic tests are used to establish a medical cause and manner of death. On May 15, 2018, the Board of Supervisors adopted Ordinance 4507, establishing OME as a separate division. This moved operations from the sheriff-coroner model to a medical examiner model within the HCS Agency. Dr. Michael Hunter was appointed the county's first chief medical examiner effective July 1, 2019. I was the first operations administrator in the organization's history, and I'm still On January 3, 2022, the OME took over one hundred percent of the death investigations reported to the county and the county, and we've done so ever since. It started out with us working with Sheriff's Office investigators until we can get our organization up to speed and take over ourselves. One of the departmental programs we provide for is the County Inigent Program. The Board adopted a policy of cremation with certain exceptions in certain cases. We help maintain the cost by scrutinizing financial eligibility of those who are requesting this service. On December 1 of 2025, the OME is moving operations to a newly-built, state-of-the-art forensic autopsy facility located in French Camp, California. While this transition is occurring, the OME will continue to work with HCS CIT staff and VerdiQ software company to upgrade our current case management software, which is severely outdated. This upgrade will allow the OME to better respond to stakeholders such as DDAs, detectives, insurance companies, civil attorneys, research firms, families, et cetera, who request information from our office and would like it repaired and delivered in a timely manner. We are really looking forward to moving into our new facility.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Chair Canepa, CAO, and County Counsel. I'm Renee Sensary, Public Health Services Director. Here you'll see a visual aid of our purpose, mission, vision, values, goals, but I do want to highlight the mission, which is what you heard in the video and kind of what we go by on a daily basis, and that is to protect, promote, and improve health and the conditions that impact well-being for all in San Joaquin County. Public Health Services employs two hundred and six staff housed over nine locations throughout the county. The staff provide support and programming for services, including the below-bulleted "departments," and I say "departments" because these are titles of units that have programs underneath them. We are federally funded, state-funded, county-funded, grant-supported, and have forty cost centers. So for example, the Health Promotions and Chronic Disease Department includes child-passenger safety, injury prevention program, Safe Kids Coalition, opioid coalition, CalFresh Snap Ed, smoking and tobacco outreach and education program, and the local oral health program. The Children's Medical Services Program includes California Children's Services, the Childhood-Led Poisoning Prevention Program, and the Healthcare Program for Children and Foster Care. The Disease Control and Prevention Program includes everything communicable disease and emerging diseases, tuberculosis program, and the HIV/STD program. The Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Program includes nurse home visiting, Perinatal Equity Program, Black Infant Health, Healthy Families America, in-home support services. The list is exhaustive. I won't go through it all, I promise, but I do have one more. Organizational planning and development includes our informatics program, epidemiology, quality improvement program, and vital records, and I'll stop there. Our highlights are that Public Health Services in San Joaquin County is the first county in Northern California to become an academic health department, and the second in the state of California. We rolled out our mobile van services in 2024 for outreach, and we celebrated our hundredth year anniversary for our regional public health lab that supports our Central Valley counties and our small rural counties. This year, we launched the first One Health convening in collaboration with the Regional Public Health Office. We join a larger movement with Northern California in the One Health Initiative, not to mention the department in the throes of COVID obtained accreditation through the National Public Health Accreditation Board and is up for re-accreditation, for which we plan to obtain. Looking to the future, we anticipate BHSA Prop 1 funding to focus efforts on behavioral health prevention activities. To start the work, we're in conversation with HCS in the Suicide Prevention Planning Committee. We are sustaining innovation and program activities through Future of Public Health Funding, which is flexible funding to support ongoing program work and support ongoing maintenance of our public health regional lab equipment and other IT operations. We are expanding our academic health department, which started with a conversation with UOP's School of Nursing and is expanding now to their Center of Business and Policy Research. We do host about thirty-nine schools for rotations through our department. We continue to grow our partnerships with our CBOs and developed a hybrid county CBO partnership to expand services to where our clients reside, as well as grow our internal partnership through new MOUs to help centralize services and provide wrap services for families with the Family Justice Center. And lastly, we are in the planning phase of our communicable disease, such as tuberculosis and STI testing, through the new Be Well Campus. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jared Bagwell. I'm the San Joaquin County Emergency Medical Services Agency Administrator. Purposes of our EMS is to provide oversight and coordination of the San Joaquin Emergency Medical Services System as a whole. Our mission is to enhance patient outcomes by delivering effective prehospital EMS through data-driven policies, stakeholder coordination, personnel support and education, and system-wide So we accomplish this oversight and coordination through various functions, and these include providing local EMT certifications, local authorizations, including mobile intensive care nurses, emergency medical responders, and paramedic accreditations. We approve EMT and training programs. We approve prehospital continued education programs, establish policies and protocol through local medical control. We authorize ALS providers. We permit ambulance providers, including non-emergency ambulance providers. The designation of exclusive operating areas for ambulance services, permitting, designating receiving hospital emergency departments and specialty care systems, such as trauma, STEMI, and stroke centers, and providing disaster medical health planning and response. Currently, San Joaquin County has two approved EMT programs and a paramedic training program. We are transitioning from the NCTI training program to a Delta EMS partnership, hopefully to start up next fall. Some of the future plans include next year, starting this year, integrating nurse navigation services into the 911 system. What that is, is an opportunity for some low-acuity 911 callers instead of sending an ambulance, connecting them with different services through nurse navigation. Over the next two to three years, we will be designating alternative ambulance destinations at two specified locations: a sobering center at the Lodi Access Center and the psychiatric urgent care and sobering center at the new Be Well Campus. We also look forward to our new EMS training facility, administrative offices, and medical supply warehouse, hopefully in 2028. The San Joaquin County EMS system provides care and transports to over one hundred twenty-seven thousand patients annually, and continues to find innovative ways to deliver the best EMS care possible. And although we are the smallest division of healthcare services, we are a small but mighty department, so thank you.
Good morning, Chair Canepa, Board of Supervisors, CAO, and County Counsel. My name is Lakeisha Holton, and I am the Correctional Healthcare Services Administrator for the San Joaquin County Jail and the Juvenile Justice Center. Correctional Healthcare Services provides compassionate and evidence-based care to individuals experiencing incarceration. Our goal is to ensure safety, dignity, and continuity of care while partnering with our community to improve outcomes for all. San Joaquin County Correctional Healthcare Services has evolved over more than two decades into a modern, integrated healthcare service provider. Established as an independent department in 2005, CHS became one of the original divisions under the standalone Healthcare Services Agency in 2010. As part of modernization and program expansion, CHS has transitioned from primarily paper-based operations to a digital infrastructure, adopting an electronic health record tailored to fit the correctional environment, improving documentation, continuity of care, and data management. In 2018, CHS partnered with the Sheriff's Office to launch the jail-based competency treatment program, bringing specialized mental health restoration services inside the jail. This collaboration expanded in 2022 with the addition of the Early Access and Stabilization Services Program, furthering custody-based care and support for justice-involved individuals. Between 2022 and 2024, CHS made major investments in clinical innovation and workforce development. We secured eighty-five thousand dollars in grant funding to expand medication-assisted treatment in response to the fentanyl crisis, hired our first nurse educator, and implemented a learning management system. During this period, CHS also joined the Age Drug Assistance Program Jail Pilot to expand access to HIV treatment reimbursement while earning a five-million-dollar grant to operationalize reentry-focused health initiatives in partnership with the Sheriff's Office. In January, CHS became an early adopter of the statewide CAL-AIM-JI initiative and entered a new era of integration and reform under Healthcare Services Agency Director Genevieve Valentine. Behavioral Health Services assumed oversight for jail-based mental health programs, while CHS incorporated the Whole Person Care Program to expand pre-release and enhanced care management services. These milestones collectively reflect CHS's transformation from a medically managed jail service into a comprehensive, multidisciplinary correctional health provider emphasizing continuity, rehabilitation, and equity in care. CHS is focused on achieving national commission of correctional healthcare accreditation by 2028 and attaining seventy-five percent CCHP certification among professional staff by 2029. The department continues to enhance its quality improvement program, expand reentry initiatives to ensure post-release continuity of care, and upgrade infrastructure to improve service delivery. Additionally, CHS is strengthening whole-person care reentry services to better support individuals transitioning back into the community. Thanks.
Morning, Chair Canepa, Supervisor, CAO, County Counsel, Matt Garber, Assistant Director, here representing the Veteran Services Office for Jose Garcia, our Veteran Services Officer, who is away today at a mandatory state training. The San Joaquin County Veteran Services The San Joaquin County Veteran Services Office, or VSO, has developed a robust and dynamic outreach strategy designed to connect with veterans across the county, ensuring that they are aware of and can access the full spectrum of benefits and services that they have earned. The VSO employs a multifaceted outreach approach, leveraging in-person events, community partnerships, media campaigns, and digital platforms to reach veterans where they are, live, work, and gather. By partnering with local, state, and federal agencies, including the Department of Veterans Affairs, County Behavioral Health, Workforce Development, and nongovernmental Veteran Services Organizations, the VSO ensures a coordinated, holistic approach that bridges gaps between veterans and critical services. Our key strategies include community events and Veterans Resource Fairs, hosting and participating in the local events to provide information and enroll veterans in benefits programs, and offer on-the-spot assistance. Mobile onsite services conducting outreach at senior centers, clinics, community hubs, and correctional facilities to reach veterans unable to travel to the main office. Partnership development, collaborating with our local military posts and veterans' centers, nonprofits, educational institutions, healthcare providers, and community organizations to expand access points and resources. Media and digital campaigns, targeted outreach focusing on at-risk populations, including justice-involved veterans, homeless veterans, and those affected by toxic exposures, PTSD, or other service-related conditions. Veteran mentorship and peer support, and training and community education. We are currently located at the WorkNet Building on 6221 West Lane, with a move planned in early 2026 to the Health Plan of San Joaquin Building in French Camp. We also provide services at the VA CBOC Community-Based Outpatient Clinic, and will have staff periodically available at the newly refurbished 22 South Main Building in Lodi beginning early next year. We have expanded significantly in the last few years, and currently have 12 full-time employees, including seven veteran service representatives, and are now equipped to ensure we meet the VSO's commitment to proactive engagement, ensuring no veteran is left unaware of the support available to them, enabling the VSO to strengthen community relationships, improve access to benefits, and empower veterans to achieve long-term stability and success.
I'm Jonathan Dealey. I proudly serve as the Chief Medical Officer for San Joaquin Health Centers under the umbrella of Healthcare Services. San Joaquin Health Centers operates in one of California's most diverse and unique regions, delivering primary care to a substantial number of our residents across multiple service areas. The county started providing primary care services in 1857 via San Joaquin General Hospital. In 2010, San Joaquin County Clinics was established as a department within San Joaquin General Hospital. And in 2014, the clinics were formally designated as a federally qualified health center look-alike. In January 2021, the County Board of Supervisors designated the clinics as a county affiliate and reintroduced them to the community as San Joaquin Health Centers or SJ Health. In 2022 was a very productive year for our clinic system. We developed care gap clinics, a street medicine team, and then became CalAim provider, providing enhanced care management and community support services for our residents. In 2023, we reopened SJ Health Clinic in Manteca, and we also won two HERSA awards, one for excellence in addressing social risk factors, and another in excellence in advancing health information technology for quality. Proudly, in 2024, we received 100% quality improvement scores, first time ever in our county. In early 2025, we revised cooperative agreement between the county and the SJCC board, and in April 2025, SJ Health realigned under Healthcare Services, making SJ Health the newest division within the agency. Our future plans are 2026, opening a clinic within the Lodi Access Center; 2027, establishing an urgent care at the SJ BeWell Campus; and also partnering with Behavioral Health Services on opiate outpatient treatment and mobile medication-assisted treatment services. Thank you.
I'm Cara Den, and I am your Healthcare Services Senior Deputy Administrator. I am also your final presenter. Congratulations for making it this far. This morning, we just want to recap. From 2010 to 2025, most of the administrative supports for healthcare services were provided by two of our largest departments, Behavioral Health Services and Public Health Services. But today, we are embarking on a centralization process. Our five key areas of agency centralization include personnel and training, which is my specialty, information, technology, and security, headed up by Mr. Justin Labadi, contract management, which is headed up by Sabrina Parker, who is unable to be with us this morning, service integrity, which is responsible for our policy development and fraud, waste, and abuse regulatory compliance, headed up by Alicia Takata, and finally, our fiscal and accounting budgeting and procurement practices, which is headed up by Mr. Isaiah Although HCS didn't become a standalone until 2010, HCS IS Team was established in late 1996, following the enactment of legislation commonly known as HIPAA. After that legislation passed, a small IS team was tasked to protect and maintain all of the sensitive health information, and today, that team takes that responsibility very seriously. The goal of establishing a centralized HCS administration division is to focus on increasing health outcomes through an integrated care model, reducing service duplication, establishing agency business standards, streamlining processes by reducing costs and liabilities, implementing strategic planning, and finally, a focus on agency-wide culture of regulatory compliance. Thank you very much for your time and attention this morning.
Chairman and Supervisors, we want to thank you for your patience. As you know, in healthcare, there's usually long lines and a lot of information that you have to receive, and multiple parties that you have to talk to before we are done. However, in Healthcare Services Agency, we wanted to highlight that we provide services to the community from birth to death, and we take every element of your life and your health seriously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's nice to put everyone's faces to their departments and show the good work that you're doing. So, thank you very much for the presentations. Any other comments?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. You're not getting off that easy, Supervisor Ding.
I want to first say that today has been absolutely phenomenal for my mental health, starting with you, Mary. Well, maybe I'm not the oldest anymore, but knowing, you know, that you're looking at programs to help those baby boomers as they get up there. And then we hear from Abigail, one of our youth, and, you know, it just, it makes you smile that the bright resources that are coming up in leadership. Genevieve and this team, and Sandy, you and your team, has, it's been such a transformational process over this last year or two, reshaping the directors and the staffs and the departments. And I just feel great about where we're heading. And, you know, all the hard work of this department is paying off. We're not just talking about what we'd like to do, we're doing it. And it really is a model for the whole country. So, to our new director that's joining us, man, you stepped in at the right time. You're joining a great team. And that's exactly what it is. It's a team. The communication has changed dramatically amongst employees, and it's just so appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All good? All right. Well, thank you guys for coming. Appreciate the information, taking time with us.
Chair, if I may, just really quickly, Chair Canepa.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to invite the board. I know everybody coming in today saw a Healthcare Services display out in the lobby. It's really extensive, and they did an excellent job. So, if board members have a chance to step out at some point and see the display, they did an excellent job.
Perfect. Moving on, public comment consent items. Now is the time for the public comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors that are not listed on the agenda, and minutes, consent calendar, and closed session items. We request that you fill out a comment form if you address the board in person. There's a time limit of three minutes for these comments. There is a device on the podium with the green, yellow, and red light. The yellow light will come on 30 seconds before the end of the three minutes. With regard to public comment, the law strictly limits the ability of board members to discuss matters not on the agenda. So, this is not an appropriate time to have a discussion with the board regarding your comments. We ask that you refrain from personal attacks during your comments, and that you address all comments to the Board of Supervisors, not to the audience. Comments from the public may not reflect the viewpoint of the Board of Supervisors. First up, and the only one I have, is Ms. Pat Barrett.
Well, I'm definitely not going to say good morning to all you guys. Oh, by now, you know your names. I had to look around. I think I'm the oldest one here, so I talk from age. You know, I'm really involved in committees and boards and the whole nine yards. And the one thing I really want to impress here is that rubber stamping and going beyond terms is not really good, in my eyes. Y'all ever dragged down El Dorado or Center one day, and the fans aren't working, and the water stinks? Well, that's what happens when you get old people, a lot of times, older folks, that have been there for 20 years on a board. It gets really stagnant. It gets interruptive. Hearing aids are needed. There's all kinds of other things to look at. But I come here because I know we have older, medium, and younger board members here. And so, to keep us all on the same page, I think it's really important that when appointing somebody, when I term out, I want to term out. You know what I mean? I don't want, I want new people on the board. I want younger people on the board. And you can see why. Younger people bring brightness, you know? We have stories. We have lived experience. But my K, my daughter's 54, my K was 54 years ago, okay? My domestic violence was 40 years ago. My drug addiction was 35 years ago. So, what do drug addicts and domestic violence and K experience today is not comparable to the decades of years ago. It's only a story now, but it's a learned story. But it's really important that I say this so that everybody's on the same page. We can't just appoint people to a committee or a board because there's an empty seat. It really needs to be looked at. How long have they been on this board? This just happened to us recently, and it was very, very upsetting to some of the board members. But there is a system. Bylaws need to be read and see, because y'all are the ones that pass our bylaws. You sign them. Those need to be addressed to see what is the bylaw saying about appointing people to these boards and these commissions. And so, I just wanted to bring that up forward, just so we can all be on the same page. I was ready to resign, but they asked me not to until we can get a change on our bylaws next year. So, when we term out, we term out. I tell my kids, take my keys away from me, or don't let me go to the store if I have to write out a check at the grocery store line. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on public comment that hasn't fell out of guard, please come forward, state your name. That's it, going once? Going twice? Moving on. Okay. Okay. Ask board members if there's any consent items that they would like to pull. There was one that needed a correction. It was item number 20. Pull for date correction. So, for the record, item 20, it says, "Adopt a resolution amending departmental position allocation listing by deleting one vacant hospital unit clerk allocation RH 0201 and adding one nursing assistant RH 3001. Allocation to the hospital enterprise fund budget number," I'm not going to do that one, 922, I guess I need to, 922-1100000. Effective date was November 24, and it needs to be changed to November 17, 2025. Is that appropriate? Madam Clerk? We're good? Okay. Start with Supervisor Guardia. Would you like to pull anything?
Number 10.
Number 10. Vice Chair Dolly Wall.
I was going to pull 18, but the questions got answered. So, I'm good.
You're good?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Ding.
I'm good.
And last but not least, Supervisor Whitman.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to pull item number six off the calendar, and to a date later determined, or postponed indefinitely, whichever.
What number is that?
Number six.
Number six. Madam Clerk? We're good with that? So, we're going to pull it to a date uncertain.
Yes, since I will ask when the board makes their motion, that the motion would be to approve consent items one through five and seven through 24 as amended.
As amended.
That are taken into consideration, your amendment as well, and then any other changes the board might have during discussion.
Perfect. Thank you. Supervisor Guardia, award contracts. Number 10. Award a contract to All Steel Fence Incorporated in the amount of $289,380. Award a contract to Stockton Fence and Material in the amount of $1.169,505 for the San Joaquin County Park Fencing Project. Authorize the Director of General Services to sign and administer the contracts and approve related budget adjustments for if necessary. Yeah, the floor.
Well, thank you. I actually don't have any questions about the actual project or the bidding process, more of a statement of why we got to this situation where we need to fence our parks. You know, often, when I talk about the parks that are in my district, a lot of people, and I would imagine some of our board members, have never been to these parks. And these parks haven't changed for decades. I grew up in a lot of these community parks, or at least a handful of them, in my district. Spent a lot of time as a youth, you know, playing baseball, football, using the facilities, which I felt that kept me and my brother out of trouble. And when I was newly elected to the seat, one of the things that really, really bothered me was, one of the bathrooms at Garden Acres Park had burnt down multiple years ago. And I was shocked to go out there and take a look at the Little League and see that that bathroom had yet been repaired. You know, when there's a Little League there that plays there on the weekends, and there's nowhere for the kids to go to the bathroom. So, as I did more research into it, and speaking to our staff about some of the issues that we've been dealing with, with our parks, and ventilism is the major issue that we're dealing with in our parks. Ventilism, illegal dumping, illegal camping. We fix irrigation. Cars are driving in the parks, smashing our irrigation systems. And I appreciate the commitment of this board to really get back to the basics of getting our parks back in order, and getting back to where our community could use them for events and everything else, and look into the future to improve in our parks. And so, I have received calls from a few constituents that really didn't appreciate the idea that we're putting fences in our parks. I disagree with them. I think it's a must-needed security that we need to do back, we need to do in our parks. I wish we didn't have to fence them, but I really truly believe it would be against our best interests if we were to invest in these parks, and anything we do could be damaged because people have the ability to go in and out of them. So, if you guys, I would appreciate just a little report why we went, you know, maybe you could back up what I said from your office.
Dan Wertz, Director of General Services, through the Chair, Supervisor Guardia. Yes, the boards have been very supportive in allowing the General Services Parks Department to try to find ways to improve and enhance our parks. One of the first things we've determined is we need to, unfortunately, fence our parks so that we can try to bring that safety and allow us to put amenities back in the parks, enhancing lighting, reduce trash being dumped, things of that nature. So, this is just one of our steps into moving forward and trying to make improvements in the park. After we get the fencing up, we'll then be able to come back and enhance- After we get the fencing up, we'll then be able to come back, enhance lighting in the park, and then amenities. We are working on a few of the different parks to enhance the bathrooms and bring back restroom services. But again, what we really see from calls at night and over the weekend is, which you mentioned, a lot of homelessness in the parks and not having a way to keep them out is very difficult. And the nice part of this award is to two local vendors within the community to provide the fencing in the nine parks. So having two vendors be able to take advantage of that and get the fencing up as quickly as possible.
Do we have a timeline yet?
Once notice to proceed is issued, it's 120 days for them to complete the work.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you. Okay, thank you, guys. Any other comments, questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve consent items one through five and seven through 24 as amended.
Have a motion in a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Call for the vote, please. Motion passes five to zero. Moving on, we're going to move discussion item. The state and federal number three, we're going to move it up to number one so that they can get on their flight. So at this time, accept oral reports on 2025 state and federal legislative overview. Hillary Crowley, Senior Deputy County Administrator.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, I think they should be running in shortly. I'm looking at staff in the back. Could we find out where Hillary? Thank you, Mo.
Great, we move them up.
I apologize for that.
They're not even in the building.
No, they are in the building. They're just in our.
Just kidding.
Waiting room. They're coming in right now. Thank you.
Chuck it off the jet lag.
They've already announced you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowley. You have the floor.
Fabulous. Good morning, Chair Canepa and members of the board, county council, CIO Regalo, and Madam Clerk. I am Hillary Crowley, the county's legislative officer and countywide public information officer. Each year, our state and federal advocates, there's a clicker, actually. Well, each year, our state and federal advocates present an oral report to your board on their efforts on our county's behalf in Sacramento and Washington, DC. Thanks, awesome. Our advocates have been meeting with department heads and county leaders to elaborate on the dynamics in play at the state and federal capitals while gaining a better understanding of San Joaquin County's unique assets, challenges, and opportunities. It is my honor to introduce our state and federal advocacy teams. With us today, our state advocacy firms Shaw Yoder, Antwee Schmelzer &amp; Lang, is Paul Yoder, who will begin the presentation. After the state presentation, our general government federal advocate, David Wetmore, from Carpe and Clay will present, followed by our water resources and flood issues advocate, Roger Gwynn from the Ferguson Group, who will conclude the presentation. He is joined, actually Jeremiah will also be presenting. Let's see, I think the board and those watching online will thoroughly enjoy this informative and interesting legislative update and overview. Paul, take it away.
Thank you, Hillary. Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members, staff, members of the public. Great to be here. You know it is one of our great honors to represent San Joaquin County and all of its residents. We will run through this fairly quickly, but we're not going to give it short shrift either. I'm going to start, Karen's going to finish, because that's when she takes her victory lap on the Delta. Okay? All right. So we are in the first year of a two-year legislative cycle, like we have in California, close to 3,000 bills. That's even with so-called bill limits in force in Sacramento. He seems nice. This year, we had to finalize this report before we had the final final from the governor on, you know, his actions on bills. The thing I want to, and I think board members who've seen us do this before, I don't like to just read the slides. So the governor's veto rate of bills, I think this will be of interest to the public especially, was a little over 13% this year. That's historically low percentage. Usually governors do 15, 16. In the Schwarzenegger era, we actually had some years where he was up in, I think, the mid-20s in terms of vetoes. The reason I like to do this is because I think folks need to know overwhelmingly, what that statistic should tell you is if a bill gets to the governor, it's probably going to get signed. It's more likely to get signed than not signed. And that's why we work so hard to keep bills opposed by the counties from getting to the governor in the first place. So this is the second year in a row with some pretty epic tension between lawmakers and the governor that you would expect as a governor becomes, gets closer to the end of his term, his or her term. That's obviously happening to Governor Newsom. The legislature is feeling it, if you will, a little bit more. But despite the strife, they really did work through some very, very big issues. Happy to say that the first bullet there, the governor's proposal to facilitate the tunnel, did not happen, but otherwise, the governor's priorities, grid regionalization, the future of oil and gas drilling in California, cap and trade reauthorization, financing the state's wildfire recovery fund, and Prop 4 allocations, they all happened. They all happened. And I want to emphasize that point, too. Everything but the Delta proposal by the governor happened that he prioritized. Next slide. So on the budget, I, there's a lot there for you to consume. I think the thing that we really want to make sure we say to you today is that revenues, you may hear revenues are up, right, over projections, and they're up several billion dollars, even just three months into the new fiscal year. And that is certainly good news, right? Looking ahead to the release of the 26, 27 state budget, however, guess what is also up? Expenses. Expenses in the state of California are running $2 billion plus over projections, just that same three months into the new fiscal year. Next slide, please. We're going to talk, again, I'm going to talk again about some things that did happen, happy to report, and I always want to give the California State Association of Counties credit when credit is due, and the Urban Counties Coalition as well, Urban Counties Caucus, I should say. The governor ended up appropriating money for Proposition 36 implementation, $50 million for behavioral health and $15,001,500 for public defenders. Is that everything counties wanted? It's not. Do counties need the legislature and the governor to appropriate more money to properly implement the will of the voters, as enacted by Prop 36 they do? Similarly on HAP, wish we had better news this year. It's more of a promise, and it's a half-promise, if you will. Local governments are used to getting appropriated $1 billion a year. This year, the governor insisted that it just be the appropriation, just be $500 million, and that the actual funding would be provided early in 2026. We do think there's a potential for that, and I want to be clear with you all, I, you know, half-promise, maybe I shouldn't have said that, but that is what it feels like after six years in a row of having $1 billion appropriated in the state budget and for you to be able to plan properly. But we are hopeful that ultimately the number is $1 billion and that ultimately the money is real. Proposition 4 is passed by the voters. The governor and the legislature got around to appropriating, actually appropriating, about one-third of the $10 billion total in the bond. There was a lot of back and forth in negotiating that, but you'll see there, money for wildfire and forest resistance, safe drinking water, extreme heat mitigation, biodiversity and nature-based solutions, ag, and park and outdoor access. $20 million has been appropriated to address invasive mussel infestations, including the golden mussels. Our firm continues to reach out to CDFW, that's the Department of Fish and Wildlife, for the public to find out their plans for distributing this money. The patchwork of local agencies trying to prevent infestations is problematic. Next slide. So this is, this is all the bills, these are all the bills, I should say, that were in the sort of end-of-session energy affordability package. Again, I will not read every word on this slide. The one I think that surprised the most folks is Senate Bill 237. That really kind of protected legally, statutorily, the programmatic countywide EIR in Kern County to allow for more drilling. There's just no other way to put it. And it's anticipated that as many as 2,000 new permits per year for each of the next 10 years will be granted in Kern County. The, a lot of the logic behind that was that there's a certain amount of crude that needs to go through the pipelines in California, or those pipelines will cease to efficiently function anymore. And I think that in the end was a real selling point for the governor and most of the members of the legislature. But we have grid regionalization on there, the reauthorization of cap and trade again, the oil and gas for Kern County, and a boost for the state's wildfire fund, which is very important after the fires in LA and Ventura County over the last year, year and a half. Next slide. Is it your turn?
Not quite.
Okay, one more slide. Some bills that we were tracking very, very closely for San Joaquin County, starting with Assembly Bill 13 by Assembly Member Ransom, that would have made changes to the PUC, basically set it up like the Board of Equalization in California, where you have regional persons who are elected by region. That is a two-year bill. Assembly Member Ransom also had AB 274 that would require the State Lands Commission to create an inventory of abandoned and derelict commercial vehicles. That is also a two-year bill. Assembly Bill 286 by Assembly Member Gallagher would have directed the California PUC to produce a report of recommendations to decrease electricity rates by at least 30%. That is also a two-year bill. And Assembly Bill 555 would have required the ARB, Air Resources Board, on a quarterly basis to submit a report to the legislature, providing data and describing the impacts of its regulations of transportation fuels, including the low-carbon fuel standard on the prices of those fuels to California consumers. We have had some good news very, very recently about the low-carbon fuel standard and the advanced clean fleets issue administered by the ARB. And we'd be happy to answer, if board members want to talk about that during Q and A, we're happy to do that. I'm going to hand it over to Karen.
Got it. I was just going to continue on with the legislation that the county supported, so if we could have the next slide. There are a few more that were on the governor's desk at the end, I believe, that the McNerney, I can't recall the McNerney bill if I've signed or vetoed, and I'll need to follow back up because we had to submit this before it was over. SB 496, Hurtado, that was a bill to provide more regulatory relief for advanced clean fleets. While the bill didn't move forward, as Paul mentioned, the Air Resources Board is going to be revising the requirements on local agencies to comply with the advanced clean fleets. It's not done yet, so we weren't able to provide definitive conditions to your staff while we were meeting with them yesterday, but we should have a better sense of exactly how much more flexibility will be given to local agencies towards the end of the year. And then finally, the Blake Spear bill regarding distressed flares was also held as a two-year bill. And then, next slide, please. You did take a position on several bills in opposition, and we wanted to give you the update there. Unfortunately, AB 339, Ortega, was signed into law. This creates some challenges for the board when it comes to contracting out for services that had at some point previously been provided by county staff. This is a measure sponsored by local labor groups that want to make sure that counties and cities and special districts keep as many jobs in-house as you can. AB 470, probably one of the singular most controversial bills in 2025. This measure would have authorized AT&amp;T and some other carriers to discontinue what's called the carrier of last resort service. So if you don't have any kind of internet at your house and you don't have cell phone service, you, under current law, are still able to have a copper line maintained into your home by one of the phone companies that maintains their condition as the carrier of last resort. It's sort of their, it's sort of the exchange you get for having a monopoly in that way. AT&amp;T has made it clear they're losing a lot of money maintaining the copper lines. They want to modernize the system and move away from copper line maintenance. Certainly, that will have huge impacts on low-income people, people that don't, you could be very wealthy but still not have reliable cell phone service at your house, and you may not have broadband run out to your house yet. I know the county's been working on middle mile and last mile broadband efforts. But if you don't have any of that at your house, you can't call 911 in an emergency. And so there were a lot of concerns around whether or not it was reasonable for the legislature to grant, really AT&amp;T, there were other entities at the table, but AT&amp;T was driving the bill, was it reasonable to allow them to leave this responsibility without your constituents being able to call 911 a different way? It got over to the Senate, and Senator McGuire, who represents the North Coast and is a former county supervisor, heard enough from his district that does not have reliable internet service and doesn't have reliable cell phone service. And that measure was held in the Senate Appropriations Committee. That's one of the polite places to kill things when you read, it died on the suspense file. It means that it's not always the expense of the bill that causes the bill to be held there. Sometimes it's just a nice way to never have to vote on it again. And so that is what happened with that bill this year. It will come back, and I guarantee you, you will be hearing phone calls, you will get emails from the companies that will benefit from legislation like this in an effort to try to build your support, or at least your neutrality, going into the next calendar year. And I want, actually, I should have done this at the beginning, commend your legislators for checking in, for tracking, for asking where you were on it. Senator McNerney's office was right with us as we were getting into the time when they had to vote on it in the Senate. And so your delegation's concern and reticence was helpful in giving the Senate pro tem the comfort that he needed to be able to park it in appropriations. Finally, SB, excuse me, AB 1333. This got a lot of concern very early on. I think you were the first county to contact us about it. It changed the conditions under which someone could be found to be not liable for committing homicide when someone's invading their house. It got a lot of response immediately. The measure was never heard in its current form. It was amended to, I think, you know, sort of take some of the provisions out of it so it didn't live in perpetuity in the form that it was introduced in, because it did spark such an incredible amount of backlash. But that part, that bill was never heard. It died sort of, you know, in the first policy committee without a hearing, and you were absolutely opposed to it. Next slide, please. Just two more I want to cover very quickly. Senator Blake Spear introduced SB 16. I think you'll continue to see legislation on this topic. It was intended to get cities and counties more on the same page. In certain places in the state, they aren't when it comes to how we're spending the funding that local governments get to address homelessness. This was pretty objectionable to counties because it tied your homeless money to some activities that you may or may not have to take here locally. San Joaquin County is not in the crosshairs in Sacramento as far as what is happening with homeless expenditures. You're doing things here that people know about in Sacramento. There are places in the state, I'm sure you've heard, where counties and cities are not working together, and there's just continuing turf battles over who's responsible for what in the service delivery. And that's really the driving force behind legislation like that. It was held in the second house in the policy committee. It won't be moving forward. Again, it's not the last conversation we're going to have about cities and counties working together with your homeless funding to try to reduce folks in the homeless state and also getting them out of encampments. And finally, SB 27 is just a continuation of the work that has been done to deal with folks that are potentially homeless but also suffering from mental health conditions and trying to get them to voluntarily participate in a program called the CARE Act. There were some provisions in the earlier versions that remained concerning to counties. It was heavily amended, but it still got to the governor's desk, and he did in fact sign that on October 10th. Next slide, please. And then, how did I spend most of 2025? The story of Karen's calendar. We spent a lot of time coordinating with the Delta Counties Coalition. You have a phenomenal set of colleagues across the other four counties that are part of the DCC. The Tuesday night before the May revision came out, I got a call that said we're going to have a really lousy spring. And the governor, the next day, released the two trailer bills that were intended to basically take every place in the regulatory and legal construct where the administration was running into headwinds to move the Delta Convenance Project forward as fast as possible, took all those issues and put it in one bill as like a jailbreak of all jailbreaks. They were trying to rewrite statute to get them out of court on the bond allowances, because essentially, the water contractors want to borrow as much money as they need to borrow in order to pay for this tunnel. So it's not $20 billion, there's no requirement at standard $20 billion. They want to be able to endet their ratepayers for however much it would cost, which is what is called the Bond Validation Act. They have, DWR is lost in court on that. This would have just basically rewritten the statute so that they could now win in court on that. It moved them through a lot of fast-tracking on the SEQA pieces. It really, as far as. It really, as far as folks that are concerned about the private property aspects of building the tunnel, which is, you know, squarely in your constituents' yards, would have taken away a lot of protections that exist around eminent domain in order to railroad through the seizure of those properties, not even making sure that the folks that were impacted had a fair market value appraisal before someone offered them money, you know, someone from the state offered money to acquire their property. All those things were wrapped up in one trailer bill, and they tried to move that forward. And then the other one was really, would, at its heart, try to accelerate the process by which they can get to a deal around water quality in the Bay Delta. And by, the way that they were going to do that, it was a short bill, it was like three sentences. It said that the water quality control plans are exempt from SEQA, which I think there's a lot of folks that like a good SEQA exemption, not in this case. So those two trailer bills were alive in, you know, in the ether until they adjourned in the middle of September. So it was a very long slog to make sure that we lock those down. And to the extent that you haven't already become aware of it, your two legislators, Ms. Ransom, Mr. McNerney, were phenomenal. They're both brand-new to Sacramento this year, and they hit the ground running. They were in lockstep and could not have been better advocates for the county with their own leadership because at that point, you're asking, you know, the governor's asking the leaders of the two houses, I need these two trailer bills, let's make, you know, let's make a deal on the budget. And your legislators went to bat so hard to keep that out of the final deal, and I just, they need all the credit in the world, they deserve it. They kept the coalition together. We are definitely outnumbered when it comes to the number of members from Southern California versus Northern California. I think there's over 50 members of the legislature from LA County. So it really takes that incredible amount of tenacity and personal relationships to preserve the Delta Coalition and keep the, keep those two items out of the budget deal, and they did, and they were wonderful to work with. There were a couple sinafos. SB 72 was cosponsored by the State Association of Counties that laid out a state water plan. Unfortunately, even after we got some amendments to take out the very overt references to court filings the DWR had made on behalf of the tunnel, that bill did get down to the governor with some amendments that we've requested, but when the governor got it, he signed it and made it very clear he was tying that bill back to the Delta Conveyance Project. It's in his signature, it's on a signing message on the bill, which was very unpleasant to read. SB 650, Senator Cabaldin, another senator from the Delta, from Yolo County, he carried some legislation that the Delta Stewardship Council needed, but we were able to finally get an amendment into that bill after 10 years that says that people that get appointed to the Delta Stewardship Council should actually have some familiarity of it as a place and not just as a plumbing fixture, although it says it nicer, more nicely than that. But that was a big thing we've been asking for since 2009 when the Delta Reform Package originally was proposed. The Prop 4 allocations, you already are aware of, and we talked about it a little bit. There's $150 million for Delta levies. The governor did not propose to spend any of that money out of Prop 4. We're going to try to go back at that in '26 so we can get you some money to continue fortifying the Delta levies, with or without the tunnel. We need levies for our own food supply and for the folks that live behind them. So we'll be continuing to work on that. We plan on trying to go on offense next year when it comes to the Delta and talk about spending money on the levies and the fact that there's other cheaper ways to secure the water supply for Southern California than building that project. And so that's kind of how I want to end that, unless you have questions. And then, next slide, please.
I think we can say.
Yeah. Just, yeah. Yeah, and looking ahead, there's quite a bit, there, obviously, there's some funding that we're still continuing to seek. There's going to be a tough budget year in the, in January. The governor proposes January '26, '27 budget. I want to observe for you, especially those of you that are working with your health, you know, coalition locally. HR1's impacts are not fully understood yet, but there are going to be a lot of things that start to happen in the first half of 2027. So the budget that the governor releases in January, the first half of '27 is part of that, and there are a lot of things that get really real for counties in HR1 in the beginning of '27, namely, as people lose their ability to afford insurance or no longer can purchase it through the exchange, they come back to counties through the section of the Welfare Institutions Code, 17,000. That means you're responsible for them as a county. That's a huge financial risk for the county, and we're aware of it, and we're looking for the governor to chart a course on how to keep counties whole as you deliver these mandated services. Certainly, we have a very big Tuesday in November, we're waiting to see how that shakes out, and we will be getting a new pro tem in November. And again, Senator McNerney worked so beautifully with the incoming pro tem on the Delta. She was the chair of Senate Natural Resources and Water before she's becoming the pro tem of the Senate. She's very fond of the Delta as a place. You did send her a congratulatory letter when she won that election to become the new pro tem, and Senator McNerney certainly seems to have a wonderful relationship with her, which is always good for the county. It's our, our current governor's last year as governor, so we should see some interesting things out of that in the final year, since obviously he's got his eye on the other side of the country. And then we will, in the, the first month of January will be, or the first month of '27, '26, they will try to do some, with some activities with the bills that were two-year bills. They've got to move them out of the first house by the end of January, so you will see a flurry of activity and inquiries from us in the beginning of, of '26 when they come back and they have to start moving those bills. I rambled for longer than I wanted to, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and thank you again for letting us work for you. It's, it's quite an enjoyable thing to be working to protect the deltas. Thank you.
No, thank you, guys. You've been very responsive to all of our needs, so it's much appreciated. Questions, comments?
Oh, I've, you know, obviously got a couple.
Supervisor Dean's chomping at the bit over here.
I would like to go into war with you, Karen, unshackled this time, although we did, we, we did take advice from council, and we thank them very much for their opinion. To, to my colleagues, I'd like to, we, we have a phenomenal coalition with Delta Counties Coalition. They're, they're a little more mild than we are. But I, I, I do want you to know that the dollars you appropriated to the marketing campaign were unmatched by the other counties, and you stepped to the front of the line in working with especially Senator McNerney, and then putting that final spike in, in some of the marketing efforts and not "Delta is our home" or whatever the hell they did in Sacramento County. We took educating the voters, which was what that money was for. We did it, and we were right. We stayed on our side of the line, but we did it right. We weren't timid, timid about it, and you should be congratulated for that. And thank you, you did your job.
So should you.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and Paul and Karen, great to see you again. It's always, always a pleasure. Couple of questions. I mean, you know where I stand. I'm not, I mean, I, I do contact your office probably more than other folks, but Prop 36 funding, you mentioned, you know, the funding, it's just a drop in the hat. I mean, folks that are watching, you have 58 counties and what are you, the $50 million, whatever? Come on, really? So is there any push by, you know, not just the governor, but our legislators to push a governor and find some money? We can find $250 million for a Prop 50 boondoggle, then I'm sure we can find some money for Prop 6, what our voters want.
Through the, through the chair, that's certainly an interesting juxtaposition. We believe that more money can be appropriated next year for Prop 36 implementation. What we're going to have, and what is vital that we work with your staff, is to get the actual numbers now that, now that it, it's happening, right? At the beginning of last year, there was a reluctance by the governor to appropriate any money, and, and what he cited was, it's just too soon. And I think the legislature deserves a lot of credit, members of the legislature, for saying i- it's not too soon, like, we have to appropriate something. So I think the more we have data, Supervisor, then I think the better our chances are, and we will get more money appropriated. We will.
Right, and then Gallagher's bill, AB 286, and I was, you know, very involved in that, and now it's in, I mean, it got suspended for, what, two years? So what's the chances of it actually going forward and, you know, reducing the utility rates, PG&E rates?
It's, as you know, we're going in the opposite direction with the utility rates that get approved by the PUC. There was, there had been this grand sort of intention laid out in the beginning of '25 that they were going to work on affordability because people's utility rates are through the roof. What they ended up sort of accomplishing was not much. The, the wildfire fund bailout that Paul had mentioned, because when utilities cause the fires that burn down hundreds or thousands of homes, the insurers are stuck, right? And they need to be able to subrogate back for part of it, and the wildfire fund is where they go to get that money. We all fund the wildfire fund, we, as ratepayers do. And so as part of the final energy affordability package, at the end of the session, it included the ability for the utilities to assess from us a rate that will replenish the wildfire fund to bail out the utilities for causing fires. It's literally that simple. And so the idea that the legislature would also then pass legislation that tries to jam down the rates, where they're passing legislation to do the opposite. The only thing that could potentially really substantively reduce the electricity rates we're all paying is if there's a way, you know, of things they accomplished this year, was the regional grid, because we may have renewable energy that is in surplus at certain times of the day, you know, when the sun is shining through all of California and the wind is blowing. We can export that to other states now through the regionalization of our grid and vice versa. So, you know, that's cheaper electricity than coal or gas-powered plants, but the, they're not going to give Gallagher a win on a bill like that when they're, they have to, you know, they're doing these bills that go in the opposite direction, unfortunately.
You know, and it's just, what, tomorrow and the next day, I think, October 22nd, 23rd, PG&E is going to the CP, the Public Utility Commissioner, Commission again and asking for another increase. So, you know, we, we hear it all the time, and I think that's one of our, at least, at least for me, I won't speak on behalf of my colleagues, but I imagine it's the same, you know, folks talking about PG&E rates, it's insane, it's one of the highest in the nation. And, you know, and, you know, they're asking what we're doing, and we're fighting like hell. I mean, we're sending letters, I know, I asked, a letter, well, we sent a letter already to the PUC, and I think our chair signed one on behalf of the board, but, you know, to everybody out there, I mean, we're working like hell. I mean, your state folks up in Sacramento need to, you know, put their money where their mouth is or their action where their mouth is. I mean, it's election year, everybody's talking about, oh, you know, utility rates are the cost of living, but Sacramento, at least what I'm saying, except for Gallagher, is the only one that's doing anything. Is, is that wrong?
Uh, may I?
Yeah, please.
So I'll just add, I think the thing we saw with that energy package and especially SB 237, the, the fear, and I'm going to use, we use that word advisedly, the fear amongst members of the legislature was the doubling of gas prices in California. So it's hard to say where the tipping point politically in Sacramento is.
Okay, let me stop you there. The doubling of gas prices, I mean, was it last, was it last November when CARB voted, a bunch of unelected bureaucrats voted to raise the gas tax anywhere between 50 to 80%?
Yes.
Again, unelected bureaucrats. So who was it that brought a bill to the legislator or, you know, the legislative body to overturn CARB's action, and it was killed?
Yeah, but, but to my point, there are, we have, half the legislature is new from the last election and the election before that, so we have a relatively new group of legislators. And on that, there's actually, I think, more legislators than a lot of people would, would think or guess who don't like that the unelected Air Resources Board members were able to do that and might have not voted to allow them to do that if they had been in the legislature at the same, you know, when, when, when that happened. And so I, I want, I just want to tell you, other members of the board, members of the public, if you are fighting this fight, I think it's a good fight, you should keep fighting this fight because there is sensitivity in Sacramento to how much water rates go up, how much electrical rates go up, how much gas goes up. I, I think with this current crop of legislators, there is the potential to be vigilant, be vigilant in a way that, that the last couple of legislate, legislatures were perhaps not.
Okay, but it, didn't that bill come this year? And then it, what even, they, then they used some constitutional leverage in, in order to get it, because they wouldn't even hear it, right? So they had to do some, I don't know, magic that whatever they do up there, just to put it before the legislators, and they didn't even, and they killed it. So how are you telling me that you have this group of folks that want to kill this bill or kill this gas hike, was it like 80, 80 cents a gallon or something like that I hear, and it doesn't happen?
There, Supervisor, we, I think we've had this conversation one-on-one, but there, there are a lot of things that go into bills being held, right? And I'll probably want to leave that right there.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, 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 but getting, sometimes when you change the champion for something that mattered, that can matter a lot in Sacramento, and there, I'll add that part. And so I, I wouldn't, I don't believe one bill getting held one year nullifies what we think we're picking up generally from this legislature right now.
Well, well, I guess this body will keep fighting because, I mean, my God, I mean, I think we're all in the same boat. How much more money can, I mean, if you have a little extra, Sacramento finds a way to take it out of your pocket.
Right.
You know, and all, you know, our families and everybody's, you know, struggling to make ends meet, working harder, more taxes, you know, we have to drive to work, gas pricing is 80 cents a gallon, it's absolutely insane. And I just want people to know that your body here, you know, San Joaquin County, we're fighting. You know, we're doing everything that we can going through your office, and, you know, the state needs a, our representative, whoever it may be, who's going to champion it, needs a champion, it's so we can have some, keep our money that we actually earned. Couple more things, revenue versus expenses. You're talking about revenue going up, right? But expenses are going up, so what does that mean? We're in deficit now, so, I mean, we were, I mean, you look back into what, the $90 million surplus, remember that, or billion-dollar surplus? Now we're into, you know, 20, 20 billion, or what is it, 10 billion now? And so what is it going to look like? I mean, one of the reasons being, you know, we pass our budget in July, you know, we kind of need to know where the state stands because they, you know, so how do we figure out our budget?
Right.
You know, so, what can we expect? I mean, I, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but.
Well, I'll go for, I, I think, I, I, we do expect another deficit. There, the one, like, single event that is, you know, a big question mark for us and a lot of people in Sacramento is, will there be significant capital gains taken at the end of the year? That, that's always a thing, every year, right? And the stock market indices have been doing pretty well. Usually, that's a predictor of people will, they will take profit, and they will pay taxes on that profit. And you may see a two or three or $4 billion event sort of December into January, but we don't know that right now. I think the reason I wanted to mention the expenses is because if, if expenses were tracking predictions, then that $4 billion, because we're $4 billion to the good so far, that would be really great news. You can't always just times the first quarter number by four and go, oh, we're going to be $16 billion up. It's not that simple, obviously, but, but the expenses, especially after the legislature and the governor thought that they had gotten their arms around, in particular, the increases in Medicare spending, I just don't think that is proving to be true. Unemployment is up, not, you know, it's not double what it was two years ago, but unemployment is up in California, and, and that means the consumption of state government services is up, too. I think we should expect that to continue, at least for the, the time being. And so we think when the governor, we get to January 10, we think the governor's going to have to say the deficit is probably 10, around $10 billion. We still have money in reserve, in the state's reserves, and I want to point that out to the board and the public. And, I mean, right now, it's a little tough to say what kind of budget year we're going to have, Supervisor, but, but we'd rather have more money coming in than less, you know, under projections.
Yeah, I know, the state never just blows money, you know, so God knows what the governor's going to do with it. Two more things, Chair, and thank you for being patient, AB 47, Kohler, I know we've been very vocal on this board on it, I know I spoke at the PUC about it. So it died in committee, so it, you think it's going, it's going to come back in some different form here, what, next year?
They, I think, since the bill was held, there's been a very personal, direct PR campaign to try to, executed by AT&amp;T. I'm sure that you've been hearing, if you haven't, you should be. I know that the, there, it's also very politically calculated. There are certain parts of the state where you really need certain supervisors and city council members to be okay so that the legislators can be okay, because they need those votes. Certainly, they really needed the North Coast in order to make McGuire feel okay, and they couldn't get there. So, but they, but watching from my seat, right, we work for several boards of supervisors, there, there were unequal efforts across the state as far as working with county supervisors, and it's because they're targeting members that have, that are represented in the legislature by key members. They're all, they're going to need Senator McNerney. members. Sen, they're all, they're going to need Senator McNerney. So you hang in there because, um, they're going to need certain legislators more than others.
And lastly, unfunded mandates. I mean, um, we've talked, I know, I know my office has talked to you about that and just letting us, letting us know the bill they're going through and these underfunded mandates that are going to be pushed onto the counties so that we can be aware. So if we have to take legal action, you know, I, I'm to the point now, hey, you know, count, if our county wants to get a loan, and of course, we need three of us, so be it. But, you know, the days of the state taking advantage of the county should, is over.
Yeah, through the Chair, I, the California State Association of Counties is, I think, going to get more aggressive in, in that, but, but, you know, you have great phenomenal staff. And one of the things that we can do supervisor, when these bills are moving through is if we get, we don't need a lot of estimates from a lot of counties to hang our hat on, right, with the fiscal committees. If San Joaquin County wants to devote the time and energy, staff, to say, we estimate this bill could cost three and a half million dollars annually, you know, you know us well enough what we're going to do with that information. And that's something that I think could be helpful going forward is quickly, in, in real time, I hate, I don't love that expression, but, you know, in the moment, being able to tell the fiscal committees, we already have an estimate of costs from at least one of our counties and here it is. And I, I'd like to actually, again, work with your staff and see what we can do on that. Um, and we might, look, there are a lot of bad bills every year. Um, and part of what we do is we try to narrow, narrow the list, narrow the list and narrow the list. And as I let out in this presentation, keep as many of the bills as possible from getting to the governor. This may be a way to keep, uh, a half dozen or a dozen, excuse me, uh, more bad bills every year from getting to the governor's desk. And so let's keep talking about that, please.
And, you know, and I'll end it there Chairman, and, you know, thank you both. And, um, you know, just keep us, I mean, at least from my, my office, you know what my trigger points are and it's the cost of living and people here watching or in the room, you can tell I'm passionate about it because I'm just tired of it. And it's, you know, this board we push, we push, we push. And, um, you know, we're very, I mean, we're probably more vocal than at least the other, I don't hear the other counties, you know, talking about it. And then you see, you know, things like the gas tax and, you know, who's, we're fighting here for our constituents and we need folks in Sacramento to fight for, you know, our, our folks as well. So I appreciate it and I think our office is going to be contacting you directly that we can meet and talk about some different things. So thank you both. Thank you Chairman. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you guys for coming and thank you Hillary for always coordinating because Hillary does an amazing job and keeps us on our feet and, and keeps you guys abreast of what we're doing. And I appreciate you guys and your responsiveness always to San Joaquin County.
Thank you board members.
Great, greatly appreciate it. Now more cheery news from our federal side of it, right?
Very uplifting and positive for you. Um, it's good to be with you, um, twice in two months. That's, that's a real treat for me. Um, and it's a joy to work with the county and your very professional staff. Um, I've got a quick slide deck to go through here. I want to make it as user friendly and not complex as possible, but I think through some of our discussions recently and you saw when you were in Washington DC last month, there's near really, no real clear path to where we're going. And I'll explain that in a second. Um, first, I always like this slide, just, this is what we do, you know, we're out of sight, out of mind. We're not 40 minutes from Sacramento, we're across the country. And so, you know, on a daily, monthly basis, these are the things we're doing for the county and your constituents. And I'll kind of put this in the category of transparent communications, advocacy, sharing information to help you make the decisions you need to make. That includes being, um, liaisons with your congressional delegation, the senate offices and with the federal agencies. Um, and finally, we coordinate closely with NACO and the CSAC DC staff. And I'll get to that in a minute, why that's important. Because Paul and Karen were talking about, well, you sent us the information, we're going to text the legislators. In Washington, it works a little bit differently. You need a bigger coalition, uh, to move some of these bigger issues. And so that's why we spend time there. And that's why we asked you to spend some time with them when you were there last month. So let me go to this first slide. Um, elections have consequences. Obviously, the Republicans control all three branches of, of government. Um, the House has a very slim majority. Speaker can only lose to, afford to lose two votes and be able to pass legislation if he's just relying on Republicans. Tight margin. In the Senate, there's only 53 Republicans. In the Senate, you need 60 votes to even debate a funding bill. So they're short. So what the, uh, House and Senate leadership, what the President's urging did is they used a budget reconciliation process. It's a parliamentary procedure with certain rules, but it allows you to avoid a filibuster in the Senate. You only need 51 votes. And so the HR1, One Big Beautiful Bill Act, AB, or OB3, depending on who you're listening to and what they call it, um, they used this procedure. They were able to pass it out of the House with one vote, um, pass it out of the Senate with the majority they needed. It extends the 2017 tax cuts, makes a sum permanent. It also deals with the state and local tax issue, which is important to a lot of California communities, providing a temporary increase there. Uh, following up on the President's priorities, increasing funding for national defense, homeland security and immigration. But the last two bullets are the ones really most impactful to the county. And that's what I, I talk about, the, the intergovernmental partnership, the federal, state, county, intergovernmental partnership and relationship. Because this bill makes significant changes to Medicaid, Medi-Cal and also supplemental, uh, nutrition assistance program, SNAP, food benefits. Um, and they've altered the programs and the funding mechanisms. Um, so I'll go to this next slide and I'll give the little heads up that I have observed in my career. The federal government has all the money. The state has the power to make the rules. And counties are asked to figure it out, produce the service and be accountable for it. In both of these programs, I think that's the direction we're starting to move in. Uh, the first bullet, disproportionate share hospital funding. It's a Medicaid program. This bill did not extend those benefits, extend, extend the cuts that were scheduled on October 1st. That program has now lapsed, $8 billion in cuts across the country. San Joaquin General Hospital benefits from this program because you have a large number of uncompensated care. And so if this comes to fruition and is closed, we're looking at a sizable impact to safety net providers. Community work engagements, um, and annual eligibility redeterminations. Now there's an annual redetermination if someone's eligible. Your county offices do that. They're going to make that twice yearly. It's your county staff doing that and that will increase county costs. Of the state, and I'll look at the funding side. I mentioned disproportionate share, state provider taxes. California has a state provider tax that you levy, that the state levies on providers. You use that money and it leverages more federal Medicaid matching funds for you. California's tax is about 6%. This law freezes it and it reduces it to 3.5 by 2032. So there is going to be a delta in the amount of money available to California's Medi-Cal program. It's a shared state, county, county administered program. There will be a role in counties for this. There's also a, a new out of pocket cost, $35 per event is capped for people in the Medi-Cal program seeking services. And that may create a hurdle for some people to be able to participate. Um, so I talked about the administrative costs, talked about what the state may do, what the county may have to do. You know, Paul and Karen, one of their slides talked about HR1, the states can have to think about it. What are they going to do? What are the rules going to be? What's your role going to be? And what's your appetite for assuming some of this and the ability of the county to assume some of this? We, we don't know that. Um, and then we talk about people who maybe fall outside of the system. They no longer are eligible for Medi-Cal or under the Affordable Care Act, if changes are there, which we're seeing, people may choose not to have healthcare insurance. They may choose to delay preventative care, which creates a different situation down the road when they need a higher level of care. And that's provided through county services. Very quickly, the SNAP provisions, food security, you know, I, I divide these, these four bullets into two categories. What would the county's share of the benefit shift be for the first time ever? States are being asked to pay a share of these food benefits. It's based on a sliding scale depending on a state's cost error rate. California's error rate's in excess of 10%. So the state's going to be paying anywhere from five to 15% a sliding scale. We don't know what that is yet. What is the state going to ask the counties to do in this regard? The final two, again, back to work requirements, this gets into the administration aspect of it. You're going to be managing the program. Your staff's going to be saying who is eligible, who isn't eligible. So these create personnel and cost issues for you as a board. So now, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go to two good news slides for you. And the first one's about all of you. I like to say you are your own best advocates. And last month, I saw that in person when you all came back to Washington DC. Uh, 18 minutes over two days, you met with your entire delegation. You met with key congressional committees and federal agencies to talk about your mega-region infrastructure investments, to talk about the importance of the farm bill and specifically some pest detection programs and the dog detector program, which is important to your specialty crops. And we met with the FAA specifically to talk about airport monetization here at Stockton Metro and the HHS and HUD to talk about your homelessness situation and Medicaid provisions that are blocking you from serving your constituents. I really enjoyed the earlier presentation about services and BeWell. And we're seeing where your discussion and you're promoting BeWell in Washington DC is generating interest, but there, you also need a partner to help you pursue these things. Um, and these homeless solutions, including the IMD bed cap that you were all active in. And the federal government is aware of it. Um, and the legislation that we talked about has been introduced. It's bipartisan. We're now actively working and your board has endorsed it. We're active, actively working to secure more congressional sponsors for it. This next good news slide comes back to the appropriations process. As you know, Congress allows local governments to request special funding for county specific, city specific needs. These are the things that really can't be addressed through a specific federal grant. There's no federal grant that kind of does these things. So this is a chance for members of Congress to try and target funds where it's needed in their communities. Now, the CEO's office and others go through an extensive vetting process to choose the projects, which I call our bulletproof projects because each member of Congress is limited in how many they can submit. So you want to submit the best ones and the ones that have the most board support. And there, here are four projects that have been included in both House and Senate, either the House or Senate appropriations bills. You'll see them there, BeWell Campus, Senator Padilla, Mr. Harder, the Sheriff's Office High Tech Detective Expansion Project, uh, for 1.2 plus million, and then the County Food Security Hub for one, uh, one point, almost 1.2 million. So almost $5 million in funds in the pending funding bills that should these bills be enacted into law. And that's the big shorter if, uh, that we've been, be money that we keep flowing to you. But all that depends on what the government does next. And that's my next slide, the pent ultimate slide, the elephant in the room slide. Um, the government shutdown. Uh, Congress has not yet passed any of the annual funding bills. The last time all 12 bills were passed by Congress, sent to the President and signed before the October 1st deadline, Bill Clinton was President, Newt Gingrich was the Speaker of the House. Since then, it's been fits and starts. And Congress tends to now operate on what they call a continuing resolution to keep the government funded on an interim basis. So things don't shut down, Congress, the government can continue to operate, provide services. Um, so this year, not different to last year, they couldn't pass the bills. So the House of Representatives Republican Leadership produced what's called a continuing resolution, stopgap funding at current year levels to fund the government through November 21st. The House passed the bill with two votes to spare and it swiftly went off on recess September 19th. The Senate, the House has not been back in, in sessions since then. That package met the Senate and you need 60 votes in the Senate to pass a bill. It's now been rejected 12 times by the Senate. The vote margin hasn't changed. So here we are in day 21 of the government shutdown. It's a full government shutdown. Previous years, part of the government was funded, part of it wasn't funded. This is the whole enchilada. And so what we're seeing is we're starting to see the impacts of some of these things. Um, typically Canary in the Coal Mine is the WIC, Women, Infants and Children Food Assistance Program. That was slated to run out of money within a week of the shutdown. President stepped in and said, I'm going to real, reallocate new tariff revenues to support $300 million in WIC. Then the question is, what about our military? Because during a shutdown, people are either essential or not essential. If you're essential, you go to work, you don't get paid. If you're not essential, you go home, you don't get paid. So what about the military? What about the Coast Guard? What about TSA? So the President stepped in and directed the Secretary of Defense to redeploy $6.5 billion to pay the troops. Similar effort was made for Homeland Security and the Coast Guard. Um, we're now seeing, last week and then yesterday, the government, the governor announced, uh, the SNAP program, I mentioned SNAP earlier, food benefits, that's going to be out of money by the end of the month. And so the federal government has directed states, asked states, urged states, do not deploy any of your November benefits yet because we don't have the money. So that's going to come due. You'll start hearing about that situation. National Flood Insurance Program, that has lapsed. It would be in this CR funding bill, but it has lapsed. So people, and there's a lot of flood plain here, people purchasing a home with a mortgage that requires flood insurance, won't be able to get it through the NFIP. If you have a policy and your anniversary date's coming up, you need renewal, it could run into the same obstacles. So these are the smaller things that people don't see or think about that we're probably going to start hearing about. Um, unless between now and Friday, the Senate passes something and agrees to something, which would include changes to the Affordable Care Act, um, the House is going to be in recess all week. So unless there's something to prompt the House to come back into session, this, sorry, Mr. Chairman, the bad news category, we're looking at probably a shutdown that continues into next week. Now, the Democrats, their objection is about the Affordable Care Act and the enhanced premium subsidies that were put in place, enhanced subsidies, uh, were put in place during the, um, ARPA, the, um, American Rescue Plan, and they were continued in a subsequent bill and they expire at the end of December. Now, if you look at covered California, about 90% of the people who purchased their healthcare shoot through the covered California marketplace. They rely on these subsidies. So if the subsidies go away, you'll see the impact on costs. Covered California has been predicting that the cost of premiums, if these don't get renewed, could increase 60, 6%. That's them not dog talking, that's not me. But you see some of these issues where whether you agree with the policies or not, if folks don't have coverage, you're the de facto safety net. And so that's why this is important to watch. Um, with that, I think I'll end the news for you here. Thank you for your time. Um, happy to answer any questions and, um, again, I appreciate working with you.
Yeah, no, I just want to say that to you, when we come to DC, you have us at all the right places at all the right times. So I want to appreciate that. And once again, Hillary, for, for leaving us. Supervisor Rickman?
Thank you Chairman. Yeah, I just want to reiterate what you said. You know, thank you very much when we go to DC, you know, and, and people, you know, don't really, I don't think people realize when we go, you know, these trips to Washington DC, it's not for vacation. I mean, we work and like you were saying, and you're right there and your staff is right there with us. So, you know, we really appreciate it and what you guys do. So thank you.
Any other questions?
I do.
Supervisor Dean?
I just wanted to say, say thank you. Um, I'm looking forward to some more follow-up from our meeting with HHS. Still looking for the correct name, phone number, his home address, everything else, um, to follow up. Was that 1995 or 96?
It was 97.
97. So it was the second. Okay. Yeah, that, it was a good time back there anyway. Thank you for everything you do.
Sure. Just very quickly Supervisor Dean, on that note, on the, the, um, discussion we had with HUD, part of the discussion was changes to the continuing of care program to reorient some of the funding opportunities to address situations like you have at BeWell. And so we're waiting for that notice of funding opportunity to be posted somewhat soon. And once we have that, we'll be sharing it with you. And we met with a lot of your staff yesterday and we put them on alert as well. So people, where that coming out?
Thank you. And, and one of the other things, obviously, when we were at HUD, we, we discussed, um, wanted to be a test county. So, um, and considering most of those guys are on one-year contracts, uh, they're not permanent HUD employees. They've got some things they want to do, get done rather quick. And I'd, I'd like to see us, uh, as the model here in San Joaquin County, be able to show the rest of the country how it's done. So I appreciate your help.
Perfect. And that's like, what I want to say is, the bad news, we have to look at because it's probably inevitable, the changes that we're having. And I mean, the government shutdown and those complexities are not any different at the state of California. Um, so having those things in the, the bed cap that Supervisor Dean has been working on so diligently with you guys has just been amazing. And when we go back there, the people that we meet and the, the relationships that you built in Washington DC all in Washington, D.C., all San Joaquin County, because a lot of people don't know what exactly we do when we go back there and say, "Oh, my goodness," you know, "You guys are not doing a whole lot." But with your help, it puts us at the forefront, so thank you very much. Any other questions? You get to fly back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hopefully those air traffic controllers, we can get them paid, right?
Good morning.
Good morning. Chair Canepa, members of the board, CEO Regala, thank you very much. I'm Roger Gwynn with the Ferguson Group, and I'm joined today by my colleague Jeremiah Van Aken. And thank you for the opportunity to be here and to continue our work on behalf of the county on your many federal water-related priorities. Jeremiah is going to start with an update on this year's appropriations process and where your key water-related appropriations projects or projects stand in Congress. Chairman?
Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board, for the opportunity to speak today. As David said, the FY '26 appropriations process is ongoing. As it stands now, the county stands to receive $1 million from the federal government through the Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development Appropriations Bill for a sewer treatment facility in County Service Area 44. This project was supported by Congressman Gray, and we are really grateful for his support and his team's great work on this project. It's going to have a tremendous impact once it receives funding. This request is also still pending in the Senate right now for inclusion in the Energy and Water Bill, which would be overseen by the Army Corps of Engineers. So we're still awaiting the outcome that that bill to be released by the Senate, and at that point, we'll know whether or not that 2.5 million is included. We're also still waiting on the Victor Storm Drain Retention Pond request that we put forward with Senators Schiff and Padilla. That request for approximately $2.1 million is also pending in the Energy and Water Bill. And we are also waiting on the outcome for the countywide emergency generator project overseen by Public Works. That request was submitted by Senator Schiff for $5.1 million and is currently pending the release of the Senate's Homeland Security Bill. We also worked with both Senate offices and both of your congressional, House representatives on the Coral Hollow Bridge Replacement Project and Lincoln Village Water Main. Unfortunately, these were not included in the House or Senate appropriations bills, but we look forward to working with those offices again next year to see if there are opportunities for these projects to receive funding. As a note of caution, as David said, we're, government is currently shut down, and we're still waiting on the full fiscal year '26 bills to pass. While the county's funding requests have been included in the, at least one appropriations bill with others still pending, there is no guarantee that the projects receive funding should Congress choose to pass another continuing resolution that does not include earmarks. Last year, we saw this happen with your Coral Hollow Bridge Replacement Project. It was included in the Transportation and Housing and Urban Development Bill. However, because Congress chose to fund the federal government at the fiscal year '24 levels for the remainder of fiscal year '25 without earmarks, that project was unfortunately not included. I would like to quickly thank the entire, your entire D.C. delegation, Congressman Harder, Congressman Gray, Senator Schiff, and Senator Padilla. They have all been outstanding to work with and have been strong advocates for the county and the county's projects. And we look forward to continuing our work with them next year. And I also want to thank you, board, as well as Hillary, Fritz, Alex, and Najee from Public Works. They've all been tremendous to work with and making sure that the projects that we're putting forward are as strong as they can be. So thank you to all of you, and I'll turn it back to Roger.
Outside of the earmark process, a lot of our efforts this year have been focused on working with the county in building and strengthening the county's relationship with the Corps of Engineers. And the reason for this focus is that the county has access to some very significant authorizations for assistance through the Corps of Engineers for water-related projects of all kinds, water supply, wastewater, stormwater, and source water protection projects. Authorizations in excess of $250 million are available and accessible through existing authorities. So we've worked with the county to maintain regular contact with the Corps staff and leadership, not only in Washington, but at the district, the division levels. You know, it's very important to sort of work through the entire hierarchy of the Corps in this process. And we worked with the county to increase the Corps' awareness certainly of San Joaquin County's priorities, again, both water, flood protection, stormwater priorities, and to position the county's priority projects for funding in the future. We've also worked, as indicated on the slide, to help identify competitive grant opportunities and provide hands-on support for some of the applications to secure money that has already been identified through the, and secured for the county through the earmark process, specifically the previously earmarked funds for the Lincoln Village Water Main Phase One project, which was secured back in FY '23. The, you know, a big part of our federal work certainly continues through the Delta Counties Coalition, working in partnership with you, with your other county participants in that, in the other four counties, in the Delta Counties Coalition, and in coordinating with the state efforts, as you've heard a good bit from earlier about those efforts. So alongside your Delta partners, we worked with the county and the region's congressional delegation, really to build strong and emphasize bipartisan support and growing support, build bipartisan opposition, pardon me, to the Delta Conveyance Project, including making certain that no federal funds are used to provide direct support for the DCP. And, you know, we've also worked, and again, these were priorities of meetings that occurred earlier in the year that you participated in, both in the September visits to D.C., as well as in earlier visits to the, to D.C. with the Delta Counties Coalition, but to urge that the permitting process, the federal permitting processes that are ongoing at the, at the federal level, that they are, that basically, that the DCP is given the, absolutely the highest level of review and scrutiny in that process. You know, we've also been working certainly with you, your delegation, to build support for additional investments, for water-related investments in the Delta. Again, building, there are some limited dollars available at the federal level for Delta levies, and certainly waters emphasizing, as Karen referenced in the earlier state presentation, emphasizing the alternatives to the DCP that are available, and again, supporting that and emphasizing that, that that's a critical part as well. And we've also worked with the, are working diligently with the county and your staff and others within the Delta Counties Coalition to build support for changes to the Corps of Engineers' policies in terms of how they make assistance available. That $250 million I referenced earlier, that's an authorization there, it's set up in a way that's really not as sort of user-friendly as we would like, and certainly that's a priority for us to work with them, to get that in a more streamlined fashion, so it'll be easier for you to access those funds and make the most of those dollars. Looking ahead, you know, we will continue to work closely with the board, certainly the county staff, and I would echo what Jeremiah said, you've got a fantastic staff, and they do a wonderful job for you, and your congressional delegation to identify and pursue funding, again earmark dollars, programmatic changes that are necessary to help facilitate the availability of federal funding to support your local water and flood management priorities. And then through the Delta Counties Coalition, we certainly look forward to continue to support the county's efforts to defend the Delta's interests and expand the county's access to water, federal water-related grants and infrastructure resources, and including federal support. I know that support is referenced in the state slides earlier, the, in terms of the golden muscle, there are federal resources there as well. There is an authorization bill that we're working on, on your behalf, to try to secure support for that, and certainly looking, will be working in the coming year to secure additional federal resources that can match up with state available resources as well. And just finally, again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you know, we thank you again for the opportunity to support you in Washington and to be a part of your very, very strong federal advocacy team, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Supervisor Ding.
Yeah, just to comment, thank you for all your hard work. I know I probably upset some of you about a year ago when you thought I was trying to kill your contracts or couldn't figure out exactly what I was up to, but, you know, I've been to a lot of dog and pony shows, and I know it when I see it. And I can tell you that I'm very pleased with the team we have here. You know, we've got, either wear a finesse grow or kill hat, and I know who's wearing which hat. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Gardea.
I just want to thank our staff and Hillary and our advocates that are working on behalf of our constituents for San Joaquin County. I can't imagine have to, to take on the, that job from my role at our state and federal level. I mean, I feel like our plates are full as it is, representing just San Joaquin County, but to step in the role that you guys do advocating for us is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to reiterate what my colleagues said. Thank you both very much. It's always a pleasure to see you guys here, go back to Washington, but also when you guys make the trip to San Joaquin County. And if you didn't already know, 5th District is the best district, so if you're here, you know, but again, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Can we shut his microphone off? So, no, I want to agree. Thank you guys so much for what you do. I mean, not only water on the top, but groundwater and our fight for that and the partnerships that we do and creating, and we've been bringing it, and we're going to bring it later, the golden muscles, you know, just how, you know, we get together to represent the people of San Joaquin County and help. It's kind of not the best predicament to be in with the golden muscles, but I mean, we're kind of ground zero. And so that's what I tell people, I say, "We don't want to lead it, but we want to make sure our people are informed, our boaters and farmers and our water folks." So you're wanting to speak up here, so you may have the floor since you lead this part for San Joaquin County, and we do appreciate you.
Well, Chair, this concludes our presentation. So thank you for your attention, and I encourage the board's approval and acceptance of the oral presentation. I do want to confirm to Supervisor Rickman, we did get a letter on behalf of the board to the CUPUC in opposition to the PG&E request for rate increase. So we did do that.
So this is informational, or we need a motion second to accept the, oh, public comment, sorry? Anybody have any questions for any of our advocates? Thank you, Supervisor Rickman, for reminding me, coming back to the board, one more comment.
One quick thing, Chair.
Supervisor Rickman.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Chair, sorry. No, thank you, everybody. I, you know, I like this when it comes to this board, and so people can see exactly, you know, what this board does. And I think, you know, people think, you know, local politicians, you know, we're out there doing ribbon cuttings, and we do two meetings, you know, a month, and that's, you know, all we do. And it couldn't be farther from this, you know, it's just not true in the fact that if you see, a lot of our time is advocating on your behalf, you know, with our state folks and the federal folks, you know, making trips up to the Capitol or to the 20-plus committees that we all sit on, or, you know, our trips to Washington, D.C. to talk to our elected representatives and our allied agencies and federal agencies, I should say. So, you know, we're, when you talk to us and you share your concern, and we're bringing those concerns directly to the people in the state and feds. So it's always a pleasure for you folks to be here, let our constituents know exactly what the issue is here in San Joaquin County, and several members, just gigantic, it may not be completed in six months, a year, and sometimes it takes, you know, multiple years to get traction and get the funding or whatever it may be. I mean, the Delta Tunnel is a prime example. So, again, thank you all.
Thank you.
Chair, I do believe this is informational, but there's a board order attached, so I'll defer to the CEO if this.
Through the chair, thank you. If we could get action to accept the report.
Second.
Motion second. Call for the vote. Motion passes five to zero to accept the report. Thank you.
So through the chair, we've got closed session, we have somebody who has to, outside council, has to take off fairly soon. And before we go in, I had, I had something I wanted to bring up to the attention of the board, an urgency item.
Okay, so?
So with respect to the urgency item pursuant to Government Code Sections 95954.2 and 95, I'm sorry, 94957.6, we request that an urgency item be added to the closed session agenda to allow discussion with the following bargaining units: Attorneys Association, Law Enforcement and Management Association, Deputy Sergeants Association, Middle Management Association, UAPD. After the posting of the agenda, certain facts became known to the Human Resources Director regarding potential future impacts with union negotiations scheduled over the next year, along with uncertainty with state and federal funding. Direction from the board regarding these negotiations is immediately needed. And so on that basis, I'd like to add to the closed session agenda permission to discuss negotiations with the, with those bargaining units. And we need a four-fifths approval from the board in order to do that. So if somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we want to wait for the fifth, or the fourth, fifths, or just vote?
If we've got four votes, we're good, so.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call for the vote. Motion passes four to zero for the emergency.
Okay.
What are we calling it? Amendment to the closed session? Is that what we're calling it?
Yeah, if we could, if we could, because we've got somebody who's going to take off.
Okay. At this time, we will recess for closed session. All righty, we are going to reconvene our meeting. County Council, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
We do. With regard to Fong versus?
Hold on, are we recording?
Focus.
Is that Chelsea?
So, so with respect to the litigation matter, Fong versus San Joaquin County, Supervisor Gardea and Vice Chairman Dolly Wall, I'm sorry, Supervisor Gardea made a motion, Vice Chairman Dolly Wall seconded it, and by a vote of five to zero, the board voted to resolve that suit, the terms and conditions of which will be made available upon request once all parties have signed off on settlement agreement. Secondly, with regard to the initiation of litigation, Supervisor Ding made a motion, which was seconded by Supervisor Gardea, to initiate litigation, and that was, that action was approved five to zero by the board. The, a copy of that litigation will be available upon request once all parties have been served in connection with the litigation, and that's all the reportable action.
Perfect, thank you. At this time, we will go back to discussion item number one, discuss and direct staff to return with amendments to the San Joaquin County flag policy for board approvals. Supervisor Gardea, you have a floor.
I appreciate that. So way back, it seems like way back, we created an ad hoc committee, and my partner next to me, who sat on the ad hoc committee, we decided to break up, our suggestion or our, our direction would be to break up our flag policy into basically two different policies. So on this policy, we did not add the 1998 Defense Authorization Act. We did, we included that, but we did not add the other flags onto that, and that's going to be a later on discussion. So in the sake of making, making it easier so that we don't have, have to have our, So, in the sake of making it easier so that we don't have to have our, every time that we put up a flag that represents the armed forces, we don't have to have it put on the agenda that these dates will be put on every year. So, you guys had all the copy of it. I'm here to answer any of the questions. I'm all over the place for some reason. That was a long closed session.
So, is that?
Just a simple, it's really what it comes down to.
Is it five armed forces and then MI?
Armed Forces, Memorial Day, Flag Day, Independence Day, National POW, MI recognition Day, and Veterans Day will be the flags that we'll be representing through this amendment to the policy.
Supervisor Rickman, do you have a question?
No, I didn't have one, but like you said, according, this is already specified in the 1998 Defense Authorization Act, so we're just confirming that, so I'm good with it.
Motion to approve.
We got your public comment.
Anybody out there, you know, he hasn't eaten yet, and he's got to catch a flight. Anybody want to step up?
After that. Do you dare, right? Would anybody from the public wish to speak on the approval of the, what?
Amendment.
The amendment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in the second? Madam Clerk, we have the pro-call vote or vote by computer? Thank you.
Have a good flight.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, I just want to also just thank again, you know, the ad hoc committee and his staff and my staff on working on, to me, this is a much important, common sense amendment to our policy that really makes sense, and it's going to simplify us moving forward to represent our veterans.
Definitely makes sense to me.
Thank you, sir.
Perfect. Okay, so, next one is from my office, and I was just trying to see, get direction from the board and ask, so I would like to start discussion formation of an ad hoc committee to coordinate with state and local agencies regarding the golden muscle. You're giving this, I don't know how to work this. Huh? Oh, I got some, yeah. So, basically, my concerns were is that we have, I just brought some pictures of the muscles, just how bad it's gotten. And so, we just kind of did some outreach with our legislative folks, and I think there needs to be a little bit better collaboration. There was one, here's another one of an intake pipe and pretty alarming. And then, there was one, the last one, is the intake pipe of this one here with the golden muscles on it on the inside and on the outside, which is part of the problem. So, water intakes, farmers, so I was just wondering, because I didn't know how much staff time it would take if there's anybody willing or wanting to do it, as my fellow board members, to do an ad hoc committee. And that's basically what the ask is for, just to try to coordinate and see how, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife received, I believe it's $20 million, and then they came out with a plan, but there hasn't been a whole lot of what they're doing with the 20 million. And then, at the federal level, they have $15 million that they're trying to get some partisan or bipartisan support to see about getting that. So, there's possibly like $35 million. How it's spent, where it's spent, and it was just kind of like, we're running around with not a lot of leadership, so I was just wondering if it's okay if we did an ad hoc, and I didn't know how much staff time, and that's why I brought it back, because I didn't want to do anything without asking you guys for permission, so. Supervisor Guardia.
Yeah, honestly, you know, I think we're behind the eight ball. It's, you know, in the very beginning, this has been something that we knew was coming, and it's going to be an ongoing problem for, I think, many generations. I think it's smart of us as a board to put together ad hoc committee to at least see what we can do to at least somewhat control them. I, you know, I don't know, there's, nobody has a plan. There's a lot of inconsistency with the state and the feds on how we're going to move forward, but, you know, we're at ground zero of the golden muscle issues when it's on the, for at least the Delta, hasn't reached the lakes, you know, some of our lakes. And what I fear is that the future is going to be bad, because it's going to destroy our infrastructure. So, I commend you on bringing this discussion item, and I would be interested in being part of that ad hoc committee if you guys would be willing to put me there.
Questions?
I don't have any questions. I don't want to, I mean, I would say whoever in the Delta area, you know, whoever wants to be on it, that's cool.
You and Supervisor Guardia, since you represent us the year.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, what I'll do is I'll go back and open it up to the public. Anybody from the public? Tracy Glaze was here, and I mean, she's been an advocate, but it's just not only the boaters and obviously Public Works and Fritz and those guys have been great, and our consultants have been amazing. They got on the phone, and we're actually getting some traction with the state, so then.
It's just amazing to me, what, like, you know, you're talking about invasive species and look, you know, and it's, you've got to get it under control.
Yeah, try to get some of the money, get some money locally so that we can, you know.
I was actually here for a different reason today, but because I am a boat owner and Vice Chairman of the Board at the Stockton Yacht Club, this is a huge importance to me and the members of the yacht club, and I commend you for bringing this forward, and I'd be happy to join any ad hoc committee if you want public, anyone public on it. I can represent the yacht club and help talk about this issue, because it's affecting all of us in the community who are on the water, so, thank you.
Perfect. Yeah, that was, Tracy Glaze was here, and actually, she was going out to meet a diver that was going to go look at a boat or something, so she was going to be here to speak, but she wasn't able to stay, so. We got a motion, and so.
Do we have a motion?
Me and you, or?
So, I'll make a motion to nominate Chair Canepa and Supervisor Guardia for this ad hoc committee.
Second.
Is this direction that we need to do official? Okay.
And that they meet at least three times a day, a week.
I like that. Is that an amendment?
8:00 AM.
With bathing suits or no bathing suits?
Oh, no, we're not going there.
Call for the vote. Motion passes fighter. Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Appreciate you.
And just note, Chairman, in meeting with the state and the CSAT guys on the issue earlier, you're going to want to start with them first, because we do have grant applications and already, and the balls are already moving.
That was one of the things, there was a deadline for the grants. The thing is, is that a lot of, like, some, they're trying to get, because you steam them and is the only way to get rid of them, and they're trying to get the grant money to do that. So, I think by November 7th, so we were trying to see if we could possibly get some grant money.
And you know Supervisor Ding has a restaurant, so it might. What are you, hey?
I checked. They're not edible, I already checked. Thank you. Thank you, okay. Sorry. Discussion item number. Four. At this time, we are going to, for General Services, authorize the Director of General Services to negotiate amendments to the Progressive Design Build Agreement with Herrera, Maguire, Hester, Joint Ventures A-25-213 for the Healthcare Services Agency Behavioral Health Services, SJB Well Project, to initiate early works, and that doesn't make sense, early work construction packages. Dan Wertz and Genevieve Valentine, you have a floor.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, CEO Regallo and County Council. Dan Wertz, Director of General Services, and with me today is Genevieve Valentine, the Director of Healthcare Services Agency. And in the audience, we have Karen Conrad, our project executive for Herrera Builders, Tyler Hester, our senior project manager with Maguire and Hester, and also Brett Mitchell with AECOM. So, we are here today to talk about the Bewell campus, one, to provide you an update and to request approval for some authorizations, to authorize the Director to negotiate amendments in the Progressive Design Build Agreement with Herrera, Maguire, and Hester, and initiate the early works construction packages, issue an interim notice to proceed for the early works construction packages, execute amendments and negotiate change orders that do not require an appropriation increase for the project consistent with the State of California Public Contract Code, and administer and amend agreements, including further amendments, substitutions, purchase change orders, approval, subletting, and assignment of subcontractors.
Chairman, Supervisors, County Council, Madam CEO, Genevieve Valentine, I'm your Healthcare Services Director. So, just to give a little bit of background of where we are, on December 2024, the county issued an RFQ for design and construction for the project of Bewell, utilizing a progressive design bid delivery model. The joint venture of HMH is who was awarded that Phase 1 RFQ. On June 3rd, 2025, the board awarded $22.03 million for a progressive design bid agreement to HMH in order to have the PDB, their validation services and pre-construction service association to these agreement. Today, we want to also let you know some big highlights that have occurred. On September 10th, we had our groundbreaking event for the project, which you were all there and in your dirt, ready to go. And on September 30th, 2025, the site grading and demolition permits were actually issued to HMH. Because this is a progressive design bid project, things actually look a little bit different. We are actually designing buildings as permits are being pulled and construction is actually happening. So, for this slide, just for ground setting, so Building A actually will be the last building that we will be building, but we already have done 5% of the design of the project. Building B, which is the first building that we will be initiating, is actually already at 60% design. Building C is at 5%, and Building D, which will be the second building, is at a 30% design already. And so, as we are designing, pulling permits, and construction is happening, we are actually doing both design and build at the same time. I do want to call out something specific on this slide. The RFP square footage for the buildings and the current design is different. One main reason of this design difference is based off of the actual awards the state gave to BHS in terms of the projects. So, some of the square footage was a little bit different than what we originally established in our RFP, based off of what the state awards were, as well as some basic modifications that needed to be done specifically connected to Building A in order to bring in public health to be part of the campus at large.
So, where we are today is, as you noticed, we were in different phases of design. In a progressive design build construction contract, the project begins with a collaboration design phase where the owner, the design team, and the developer develop a project design, scope, and budget. And as a design evolves, the team identifies opportunities to issue early works construction packages for things such as site preparation, utilities, foundation work, or long lead items. Early work construction packages allow the project to progress while the design is finalized. Although they are developed using partial design documents, early works construction packages include clear scope, pricing, and risk allocation. During this phase, open book cost estimating continues, along with continued value engineering, are refined, is used to refine the design and control costs. Once a design reaches a final level of completion, usually about 80%, the sufficient cost certainty has been achieved, and the team negotiates the final guaranteed maximum price or GMP for the product. The contract then transitions into full construction using the agreed GMP, with the builder proceeding as a single point of responsibility for both design and construction. So, this slide shows where we are today. We've received early works package one, that's for contract mobilization, site demolition, clearing, erosion control, grading of the 18-acre site. And the cost of that is, at this point, $23.4 million. Package two, we expect to receive in early November 2025, and that estimate is about 60 million. Package two includes Building B structural package, structural steel, steel procurement, fabrication, general requirements for onsite work, and long lead time mechanical, electrical, and plumbing equipment, including generators. Package three, we expect to receive in late November, and that's for all utility connections, water, electricity, and sewer for the 18-acre site. That we have not received an estimate on yet.
I have a question from Supervisor.
Dan, what is contract mobilization and how much we paying for that?
Contract mobilization is to get the contractors to the site so that they can bring in their, bring in their offices, bring in equipment, put fencing up, secure, you know, get the site secured so they can begin the grading work package. I don't have the exact amount of the mobilization. It's included in the $23.4 million amount.
You don't have the line items?
I may have to look at, let me look, see if it's specifically lined out.
While Dan is looking that up, I do want to call out very specifically for package one and package two. It'll be for the entire property. It is not just Phase 1 for Bewell. We have realized in terms of our estimating, being able to grade the entire property, being able to bring in all of the sewer, all of the electricity and so forth for all 18 acres for both phases will be cheaper in the long run as we're preparing for both phases.
Chairman. Supervisor Rickman.
If you, since you're looking, yes, we have downtime here. So, how are you going to assure us that this is what we're seeing here with estimated costs, is going to be around the estimated cost, not what we've had to deal with in the past here?
First of all, to answer the first question regarding mobilization, Maguire-Hester has their amount for mobilization listed at approximately $80,000. But there are a variety of other costs then assigned for clearing, demo, tree removal, you know, I have probably about 40 lines of different items that.
That's fine.
If I can provide those two.
No, that answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So, with the guaranteed maximum price, I mean, I guess at this point, I'd really love to have our, Karen come up and like, answer the.
You know, actually, why don't we just hold off on that question and go ahead and do your presentation, and then once you guys are done, we'll go with that.
So, back in April of, April 22nd, 2025, the board approved the original contract with HMH, and they approved the overall budget, which you can see on the left-hand side, of $261.8 million that was estimated at that point in time. In the current fiscal year, we only included appropriations in the 2025, 26 of $80.5 million. What we've awarded contracts for today was the 1.675 to HMH for validation services, and we came back and awarded secondary, second part of the contract for additional $20.4 million to bring the total amount awarded to HMH for validation and pre-construction services to $22 million. So, today's actions, by approving the early works package within the appropriations that we still have, we'd be awarding, providing the authority to the General Services Director to negotiate the contract so we can start the early works construction, which is the site grading and mobilization cost in the 23.4 million. We'd also be looking for approval to continue to allow for the early works work back in the Phase 2 and Phase 3 up to the total appropriations of the $80.5 million that have been approved to this point. That allows HMH to begin mobilization to make sure that, do you want to switch to the next side?
Oh, sorry.
Thanks. So, the risk of not starting and approving this today is the timely approvals needed to avoid jeopardizing $11.6 million in the state grant funding. And also, the grants tied to quarterly milestones on the Building B completion by June 2027. Another thing is we're getting into the point of the year where weather is going to start taking a factor, and if we don't award the early works and allow them to move forward with mobilization and start grading, we can jeopardize the overall completion schedule as it would push out months until the rain subsides.
And to call out and to add about the $11.6 million, that is actually B chip round $5. So those were awarded to Behavioral Health over two years ago. Originally, we were going to only build a PUF, a psychiatric health facility, and it was supposed to be actually on hospital grounds right by where the new med school was, or is breaking ground. What ended up happening was, at that time, we knew with the passage of Prop 1, we were going to have the opportunity to build campuses and so forth. So that is when the board gave, at the time, Healthcare Services the ability to work with the Health Plan of San Joaquin to see if the 19 acres across from the hospital was available. So we have actually been delayed in terms of using the construction dollars and infrastructure dollars of B chip 5, which means we have a very, very tough timeline to meet those dollar milestones. And we do quarterly have to provide updates on Building B and specifically the psychiatric health facility. And we do have, we potentially are jeopardizing the 11.6 if we are not fully operational with operational permitting for June 2027.
So the next steps would include the Director of General Services to negotiate and execute amendments to the existing contract for HMH, authorize HMH to proceed with the early works phases of construction, provide regular updates to the board on milestones and funding, come back with the guaranteed maximum price is developed, which is expected to be in early spring of 2026, and project completion and final payment upon acceptance of the facilities. So the recommendations that we have before the board is to authorize the Director of General Services to negotiate amendments to the progressive design build agreement with HMH for the SJ BeWell project to initiate early works construction packages, authorize the Director to issue an interim notice to proceed for the early works construction packages, authorize the Director to execute amendments and negotiate change orders that do not require an appropriations increase for the project consistent with the State of California Public Contract Code, and authorize the Director of GSD to administer and amend agreements including further amendments, substitutions, purchase change order approval, subletting, and assignment of subcontractors.
So as we open up questions, I do want to show all of you the current renderings of the BeWell project with the four buildings for Phase 1. The building that is closest to me with the, the door that's purple, that is the Building B, which is the urgent care building, which has the, the funding potentially being jeopardized. The building to its right, which has multiple green pastures around it, is our MHRC, which is a locked facility. The building behind that is-
Is that its what?
An MHRC locked facility, 64-bed locked. The building behind it is the substance abuse residential programs and the substance abuse outpatient. And the building that is my favorite, that looks like a barn in the center, is Building A, which would be where the health clinics would be residing, behavioral health outpatient programs, our teaching kitchen, and cafe, and public health.
Supervisor Grede, any question?
Can you expand on number three, the execute amendments and negotiate change orders that do not require an appropriation increase to the, for the project?
Yes. So that's providing approval so that I can work within the existing appropriations, which is right now $80.5 million that has been approved in the 2025-26 budget that we're in, to make sure that, working with HMH, we can issue the appropriate amount of Package 1, 2, and 3, so that they can move forward with early works construction, come back and if, while their Package 2 is at $60 million, letting me work with them to determine what are the long lead items that need to be issued, because obviously, there's not enough appropriations to issue the full $60 million. So we'd be working together as part of what we are currently doing and have been doing in this whole process in the progressive design build, where we work with the contractor to come up, what is the best design alternatives for the project, and allow them to continue their work in a phased manner that does not delay construction or ordering of equipment.
So, so basically, you'd be the only oversight on, on any type of amendments or, or change orders?
Well, we currently work in a, I mean, Genevieve and I have been tied at the hip working on this whole project for probably the last four months. Well, yes, it gives me the director as the point and contact for the project to make those. I have been working with Genevieve, County Council, and our, our construction firm along the way, you know, to, to make sure that we're making the best decisions for the county.
In addition to that, we have AE Comm, who is an owner's rep, who is doing estimating and validation on behalf of the county.
So there's oversight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we, we do also have meetings with the CAO's office and team discussing this. We have a scene, we have part of the weekly meetings that we have with HMH. There is a senior leadership group meeting, which consists of Karen from HMH, Genevieve, myself, and Brenda Kylie from the CEO's office, where items are brought up to make decisions as a group. Not one individual is fully responsible for the project, making those decisions.
So basically, this is the first step in handing him over the piece of property to do their, start their work?
Yes.
This is giving them the property, and now they have it until they're done with these. And so this is the checkbook to get them started and get all the underground first, bringing their offices on there and get the ball rolling.
Yes.
So we can meet the 2027 guideline of June to get Building B done.
Correct.
That's part of the first three packages. It's all work that needs to be done to do any building on that site. So, you know, every one of these packages that's going to be done is going to allow for us to start delivering those buildings and see that the project and the funding can be drawn down from the state in a timely manner.
Okay. And this building is the best one to start out of the way, because obviously, you don't want to start and then work over yourself with the work. So that's why this B building is being started first, because it's in the back corner?
B is being started first because that's where our first set of timed funding is. Also, maybe not necessarily from a construction perspective is it the best, but it is from long-term operations. When ambulances are coming in, when fire departments are coming in, when we have an alternative destination, this is actually the safest drop-off location on that site for individuals coming in for treatment. So there, there's mechanisms in terms of funding. Building B is connected to the B chip 5, but also long-term operations of that location and how we need to make sure that there's safety for those patients coming in for the alternative destination.
Okay. Supervisor Dellywall, Supervisor Dellywall.
Genevieve, by doing all these amendments, are there any savings?
I'm sorry, this last part.
Oh.
Savings.
Are there any savings? Because we, we're doing things a little bit differently now than originally planned.
With a progressive design build of, which is new to this county, and normally, it's not the way we handle construction, we are able to take advantage of cost savings and design ideas along the way as we're doing the design for these early stages. So we're better to get a better value. By having everyone in the room, from the, the trade partners, the construction management firm, the, the staff, Genevieve's staff, when things come up, they can make immediate decisions and change those designs that will allow for those changes to take place up front and should reduce change orders down the road because we're identifying those items as, as stumbling blocks or opportunities up front.
And to add to that, to answer, long-term cost savings, yes. Because when we are actually doing the demolition, we're actually doing the grading, and we're actually looking at all sewer, all water, all PG&E to the whole 18 acres, this allows us not to have to do that and pay for a second time of PG&E coming in, a second time of connections when we start Phase 2. And we're hoping to actually start Phase 2 early next year. And so giving us the ability to actually do all of that grading, siding for both parcels within the one parcel does have cost savings to the county in the long run. We may not see it on the front end, but we will see it three years from now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Rickman?
I think my question was answered by Supervisor Grede and Supervisor Dellywall. Of course, I'm always concerned, you know, the fiscal side, because what we've, you know, this board has been through. But to make sure that our estimate is somewhere near, I mean, hopefully, it's, you know, over, so we have cost savings, or I guess, you know, our estimate's higher and we spend less. But it's just something that we're going to continue to watch. I mean, last thing I think this board wants, or any one of us wants, is, you know, you have $60 million, it comes back $10 million higher or something like that, because this is going to be, if, if that happens, I guess, you guys back there, there's going to be a lot of questions and why we didn't notify it, or why weren't we noticed or notified, and our staff didn't, weren't aware from it in the very beginning. So, but hey, it's an awesome project. I think we're all excited to get the shovel in the ground and hammers and nails and everything, you know, start construction. So, good job.
I, I do want to call out just for transparency for the board. The $262 million that was approved by this board did not include three elements that we have asked HMH to include in their designs, just for transparency. The health clinics, which we will bring another item to the board for the, that construction, because we have to get the SJCC board on board first. The public health part, which is about 3,000 square feet, that way, we no longer have to do the Wilson Way replacement. So we would be reducing one capital project and moving it on to BeWell, as well as there's, we've asked them to design to see what it would look like to move all administrative offices out of lease-related buildings and move them to BeWell. So our current estimate and so forth, long-term, as we are looking through the GMP, is higher than the 262. But two items we knew we would have to come back to the board for because of public health not being at Wilson Way and the health clinics being put onto this campus. So we still need to bring those to the board. And then the item of me, of being selfish and asking what it would look like to have all healthcare service administration moved there and seeing what the long-term costs would be. So we, we know that we're starting high and moving low in order to give the board full transparency of what might look like in the long run, and if we want to make decisions of continuing having leased buildings for certain staff, or do we actually want to permanently move them to the BeWell campus. And we're trying to do that in the design process now so that we don't have change orders or other decisions made long-term, that we can actually plan from that perspective and then take things off of the table rather than adding things on later.
Anybody else?
I do need a motion number.
Perfect.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Well, second, doesn't matter. Whoever.
Do we need them separate, or are all four of those together? Okay. We have a motion and second. Call for the vote, please. Let's get it started.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Whatever's supposed to go at 6th South Elberrado, should we go out there?
I'll go first. Sixth floor, good trunk or treat out at Mickey's Grove, and Supervisor Ding was out there with his grandkids getting candy and great, great turnout, great, great fun evening. Went to White Kane event and put on a mask and walked with, with a cane, definitely a lot more challenging than it seems. Miracle Mile Car Show, USS Lucid, I don't know if anyone's, when they have an open house, it's great to see. Vietnamese Festival, obviously, the state of the county. I want to thank everybody that helped get that going. Kevin and Sandy Huber were Goodwill Dinner recipients. Amazing, they raised $250,000 for Goodwill Industries. Family Promise was another amazing event. Lots of great people. And we did a, a call with Cal Matters on the Golden Muscle. Been a busy couple of weeks, lots of got, lots of things to do and lots of places to go. So, thank you. Supervisor Rickman?
Good news, I'm in the, since we met the last board meeting two weeks ago, Tracy Hyde beat Lodi. So almost did a shout out to Supervisor Ding. And on our homecoming, beat Lincoln, which the Stockton folks, you know. So I wanted to share that with everybody. But a couple of things that we had, it's just been lots and lots of events, but I'll keep it very brief. Over the weekend, you know, joined, you know, OES Mountain House Fire, French Campfire, Lathrop, San Joaquin County Fire Authority, Tracy Fire, and allied personnel for training on several drone programs implemented by different agencies. So it was pretty much for, hey, if there is an emergency, and all the different drone programs, we're familiar with the other department's drone systems, and the system with like, you know, aerospace and so on. And it was cool. And I don't think many people realize is that, you know, you have drones and, you know, so you have a fire or, you know, levee system floods or whatever, you know, you can relay real time to, you know, the first responders or agencies on scene. But say if one of us, let's say the chair, I mean, you're Director of OES, right? If you're in Washington DC, there's a system that they can share what exactly going on in real time to you on your phone or your computer, whatever, so you can actually see what's going on out there. So it's, it's, it's very valuable, valuable, valuable term. We had Diwali melee over the weekend at Mountain House, you know, great event, great community. Supervisor Grede joined me there. It's always great to celebrate. Happy Diwali, everyone. Main Street Day in Ripon, that was the 40th Annual Main Street over the weekend. Again, great community, good times. And then Ripon Chamber is awesome. Our CAO was out there too, her and her husband Joe. So it was a great, you know, great community event. And I will go ahead and shut it down from there, but great job to our chairman for the state of the county. You did a great job, you know. So, you know, kudos to you and your team, putting that all, you know, you and your team out here. Nicole and Gina too, I know were involved, Katie, you know, the whole entire county staff, you guys did, you guys killed it. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd echo those, those comments. That state of the county was perfect. It was on time. It started on time and it ended on time. Weather was beautiful. It was nice. I've been spending, you know, again, a lot of time on this 16-bed cap and been doing a lot of radio shows now, up and down, and trying to gin up information on that. We're heading, I'm heading down to Lafco, talking about consolidation for our, you know, fire districts here tomorrow. I went to the bullfights last night, Our Lady of Fatima, all the, the Portuguese that wanted to get out of Tracy and come to God's country, they came up our way. So we did that. And then the Clements Rodeo, first time in 20 years, we brought the Clements Rodeo back. And so we did that on Saturday and Sunday as well. Very, very successful. Very proud of the team out there that put it back together. So, that's all I've got.
My turn?
Yep.
It's been really busy. We attended a Mantica multi-chamber mixture, had our dinner. Then the state of the county was amazing, like my colleagues said. Thanks to all the staff members who put it together. And you did a very good job. Appreciate that. Talking about Diwali, I attended two events so far. There are three more, so it'll be concluded on 26th. So a lot of Diwali celebrations.
Yeah, I just want to echo what my colleague said. The state of the county was really, really good, well, well performed. You know, I want to thank everybody who's involved. Like my colleagues, it's been really, really busy, and I don't want to repeat all the same events we've all been to. But it's, it's good being out in the community. And, and, you know, often, we focus on the, the bad things that happen in our community. It's really good to get out and actually see what, what the good is out there. And that's what I recommend do, not just, not just the elected, but to everybody. Get out, get out in your community and see what we have, what, some of the good things we have to offer.
Yeah, too, I want to commend staff. I mean, the, the, the displays on the lawn were amazing. The food was amazing. So thank you, everybody that helped on that. Today, I'd like to close on behalf of a Stocktonian, Doug Martin, who passed away. And Leslie Martin was on the Stockton City Council, and she was a county employee for the loss of their son, who passed away over the weekend in, in Oakland. So if we could just close the meeting on their family's behalf, I would appreciate it. Thank you.